Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting for April 18th, 2011 to order. First thing as always on the agenda is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson. Wifin Buck. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello. Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason. We have quorum.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, if you please turn that off or into the vibrate mode, we would certainly appreciate it. And also, if you wish to speak to any issue on the agenda or during the public comment period, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, our right, over on the media table. If you please fill that out, put your name and also the item that you wish to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we will not overlook you. With that, next thing on the agenda as always is our invocation. Is Pastor Bob Jacobs with us? There you go. Would everyone please rise for the invocation? Pastor Bob Jacobs from the Westminster Presbyterian Church will be giving our invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you. I invite you to pray with me. Eternal and gracious God, we give you thanks tonight for the gift of life and for the calling to live our lives in the awareness of your presence and in your good intentions for us. We thank you for both the private and the civic life that we share and for the freedoms and responsibilities they entail. We pray tonight for your guidance as we share this life together, stir our concern for one another, and particularly for the disadvantaged and the voiceless of our community. Renew us in our commitment to social righteousness, to fairness, to decency, to charity, and to the immense dignity of each person created in your image. Tonight, give us wisdom and humility, courage and humor, so that you may be honored tonight. Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda as always is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that we need to add to the agenda? I'm going to go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
Yes, I have two items. Item 76A, which would be authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a letting agreement for the East North Street project from Pine Street to Campbell Street. And then my second item would be 76B, authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a letting document for the Mall Drive project from Haynes Avenue to La Crosse Street.
Very good. So I have a 76A and a 76B. Any additional items to be added to the agenda tonight? Please turn on your light. Seeing no additional lights, chair will look for motion to approve the agenda as published with the addition of a 76A and a 76B, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the minutes. Chair will look for motion to approve the minutes from the March 28th, 2011 special city council meeting and the April 4th, 2011 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the minutes. Chair will look for motion to approve the minutes from the March 28th, 2011 special city council meeting and the April 4th, 2011 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to awards and recognitions. And Joe, I'll have you come up and join me if you would, please. When all fails, that's one that knows something about technology. It's always a pleasure to recognize our veterans, those that have served our country and defend our freedom, and tonight's no exception. Let me just read this proclamation for Joe here and give you a little bit about his history and his service to our nation. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the April 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Joe Prokaska. Born on June 18th, 1919, in Velveter, South Dakota, he graduated from school in 1937. Joe was then inducted into the U.S. Army on May 7th, 1942. After basic training and mechanized armored training, he served the 14th Armored Division of the 7th Army. He stayed in that division during his entire military commitment, working in supply functions. He sailed to France on the troop ship Santa Rosa, which was part of a 25-ship flotilla. He was involved in several military engagements that ended at the Battle of the Bulge in Belgium. Now, the 14th Armored Division crossed the Rhine River in Germany on April 1st, 1945. This division eventually earned the name of Liberators for releasing thousands of American and Allied prisoners. The division also liberated civilians from many nationalities, from forced labor camps, forced labor camps and concentration camps. As part of General Patton's 3rd Army, Joe was involved in the occupation and the security involved with guarding Hitler's mountain retreat at the Eagle's Nest in Austria. After World War II, Joe returned to the United States and was released from active duty with the rank of Staff Sergeant. His awards and decorations include many, including the American Campaign Medal, the European-African-Middle East Campaign with two Bronze Stars, and the World War II Victory Medal. The United States House of Representatives honored the 14th Armored Division with the House Resolution 1483 on July 20th, 2010. Joe and his late wife Darlene have a son, Burl, and a daughter, is it Vejean? Vejean. And four granddaughters. Joe worked in retail and retired in 1986. He is a due-paying member of the VFW and the American Legion. Joe is considered, Joe considers among his proudest moments the ending of World War II and being a member of the South Dakota Honor Flight to Washington, D.C. in August of 2010. Joe needs, we really need to commend Joe for his service and his dedication to our country. With that, I would present our Veteran of the Month. Congratulations. One of the other great honors we have is to recognize our long-term employees, and this evening is no different. We actually have the honor of acknowledging Bernie Hall's 25 years with the City of Rapid City. And with that, Brad, are you going to tell us a little bit about Bernie's career?
Just a little bit. Just a little bit. I just wanted to, on behalf of myself and the City of Rapid City and Building Inspection Division, we want to congratulate Bernie Hall on his 25 years of dedicated service as Chief Electrical Inspector. And he's committed for his hard work and willingness to contribute to efficient operations within our department and his consistent application of the Rapid City Municipal Code, specifically the National Electrical Code. Thank you, Bernie.
Come on up. There again, we actually have a number of recognitions, and I tell you what, it really speaks volumes to the City of Rapid City when we have long-term employees that are staying with us for 20, 25 years. And Mike Lang is no exception to the rule. He's had a very distinguished career with the Rapid City Police Department. With that, I'm going to introduce Chief Allender, who's going to say a few words and give us a little bit of history about his career at the PD. Chief?
Well, Mike Lang came to the Rapid City Police Department 20 years ago. He was a math major. He was the only guy I knew at that time who had a master's degree in mathematics. So everyone in the crowd who loves math, one of us in here? Anyway, got to admire him for that. He came in 1991, and our department was just getting started with the push for community policing, a nationwide effort or awakening really in how to police community differently. And Mike was one of the first volunteers and one of the longest employees committed to that. And if any of you live on the West Boulevard area, you've probably met Mike knocking on your door. So Mike worked as a patrol officer for about 10 years, and then he went to South Middle School where he was a school liaison for about seven years. And a lot of people underestimate what it's like to be around 600 middle school kids, but can try your patience a little bit. And Mike's got the right personality for that. So then after this, he came back, now he's a patrol officer again, and he's just a hard -working, steady, solid employee, and we're glad to have him around for 20 years. Congratulations, Mike.
Before I speak very briefly, I would like to say there's probably one other person in here who's got an appreciation for math. My brother-in-law, Jerry Wright, right here, has got a master's degree in engineering, so he's got a better appreciation for math than I do. But I would like to say on behalf of the Rapid City Police Department that I'm very grateful for my employment there. I've worked for quite a few employers over the years, and I can say with absolute certainty, I've never worked for another employer that bends over backwards to accommodate some employees like the Rapid City Police Department does. I've seen time and time again where the Rapid City Police Department will go to extraordinary lengths to take care of an employee in one way or another, and I'm very grateful for that. And I'd like to thank all of you for that, too. Thank you.
Chief? Well, this evening, we not only get to celebrate someone's career, long career in the Rapid City Fire Department, we're also wishing him his best into his retirement. Captain Enright has been with us, and he's served this community very well over the years in the fire service. With that, I'm going to introduce our Fire Chief, Mike Maltever, and to give us a few words and a little bit of a history as far as Mark's career with the fire service. Chief?
It's an honor for me to stand here tonight and recognize one of our fine captains of the Rapid City Fire Department. Mark is going to be leaving us after 18 wonderful years of service he's given to both the Fire Department and the City of Rapid City and all of its citizens. And just a little bit about Mark, he came to the Rapid City Fire Department and joined the city staff in 1993, and he's told me before that he was fulfilling a childhood dream of his was to come to the Rapid City Fire Department or probably any fire department when he was a small child. But nonetheless, it was a dream come true for him. He was promoted to Lieutenant in Operations in April of 2003 after about 10 years, and then was recently promoted to Captain in the Operations Division in 2009. Mark's going to be leaving the Rapid City Fire Department here after about 18 years of service. Again, very dedicated and committed service to both the citizens and as well as the operations at the Fire Departments. He's served us in a number of different capacities over his career. He served in our Training Division where really we got to see a lot of Mark's unmatched talents and his attention to detail and his ability to take new firefighters and bring them up and train them to be awesome firefighters and good employees for the city. With that, he's also always had a caring heart for our young firefighters and their ability to deal with tough emotional situations. Mark was involved with our Critical Incident Stress debriefing team, which if a firefighter goes through a traumatic time for them emotionally, they see something out in the field that may cause them some emotional difficulties. Mark would bring a team in and sit down with that firefighter and really mentor them and help them through that process. And also, Mark has been instrumental with our partnership with Western Dakota Tech and their Fire Science Program, which is the reason he's kind of shortening his career with the Rapid City Fire Department. He thinks maybe his time is done here, but we're going to still use him to the best of his abilities, anyway. He's going to be heading up that program out of Western Dakota, training and preparing young firefighters, college students, for their career someday to hopefully they can fulfill their dreams. And it's a good opportunity for us to share the Rapid City Fire Department with these young men and women that have come through the program out there. And so we're just real tickled to see Mark celebrate 18 wonderful years, but we're also happy to have him staying close by and continuing to help us in our role to serve the community. So with that, thank you, Mark.
Very much. I would like to say that it truly has been an honor and a privilege to serve, and I thank the opportunity to serve the mayor, the council, and the members of the community. Hopefully, I've been able to make a difference in people's lives, and I have made a difference in a few people's lives, anyway. And I leave knowing that I've done a good job, and I know I'm getting too old to ride the big red fire trucks, so it's time for me to go and let that for the younger men like my son back here who's just starting his fire service career. There again, this evening, we're also honored to recognize another long-term employee who's going to be retiring from the City of Rapid City, and that's Chuck Larson, who is our Industrial Waste Supervisor. And I'm going to have Dave Van Cleve come up and say a few words about Chuck's career here with the city. Dave?
Well, it's my privilege to talk about Chuck Larson, who has actually been with the city for 31 years now as a temporary employee. Chuck is a stickler for details, which suits him well in his job as the Industrial Waste Supervisor. And 40 years ago, Congress enacted the Clean Water Act, and Rapid City 10 years later then established an industrial waste program to control the waste that reached Rapid Creek through our wastewater treatment plant. In 1990, Chuck took over as the Industrial Waste Supervisor. He's got a background in chemistry, and it's almost a thankless job, but it takes a lot of skill and knowledge to deal with the various processes of all the industries within the city and to be able to regulate those processes so we don't discharge hazardous waste into the creek. And so I want to thank, well, first of all, his wife, Jody, for allowing us to have him for the past 31 years. And Chuck, I would like to thank you and appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of Rapid City.
They told me I couldn't talk too long, but okay, I've been 30 years consistently collecting a paycheck from the city. Who'd have thought it? 21 years actually in my existing position, and it's time to go on to other adventures.
I'm going to go ahead and have introductions here, and then I'm going to read a proclamation. But I'm going to tell you what, this group of young men deserve an awful lot of credit because of the fact that they have a distinct honor of actually representing not only the School of Mines but the state of South Dakota in a very prestigious competition. With that, if you want to go ahead and do the introductions?
I'm Ed Corwin, Professor of Math and Computer Science from the School of Mines and one of the coaches of our programming team. The other coaches are Roger Schrader and Tony Logar. And then our team that qualified for the world finals is Ethan Robish, Randy Foudre, and Matt Dozenfance.
Let me go ahead and read the proclamation now. The other thing that we should be so proud of, each one of these students is actually from South Dakota. They're homegrown. And let me read this where it says, whereas 24,915 college students comprising of 8,305 teams representing 2,077 universities from 88 countries competed for the opportunity to participate in this year's World Computer Programming Contest. And of those, only 300 students representing 105 teams will be going to the world finals. And whereas, one of South Dakota's School of Mines and Technology computer programming teams is among only 18 teams in the United States, including teams from Duke, let's see, Princeton and others that qualified for the world finals. And whereas, the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology is a source of pride for our community, and whereas, this is a significant accomplishment for the South Dakota School of Mines team members. And whereas, the team, their coaches, and their supporters rallied and regrouped and revamped their schedules when events in Egypt resulted in the world's finals set for March 31st in Egypt had to be rescheduled for May 30th in the United States. Now, therefore, I, Alan Hanks, the Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim that May 30th, 2011 is the South Dakota School of Mines World Computer Programming Team Day. Congratulations, everyone. If I would have been smart, when the mic wouldn't work, I would have got these guys. Joe? And then we're going to get a picture. Okay, now everybody's squeezing real tight here, so we can get a picture. I'm going to tell you, I'm about as computer illiterate as they come, so as an honorary team member, I'm going to depend on them when my computer breaks down. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. It's always a pleasure to honor those, not only those that have served our community for a number of years, but those retiring, and also those that deserve special recognition. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the city council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. I think we did have, hang on, let me look through here real quick. We do have a speaker request form during the general public comment period from Dan Sefner, Mr. Sefner. Now typically, we do have a three-minute time, and what we'll do is we'll ask you to watch the lights. And with that, Mr. Sefner, if you would, go ahead and identify yourself for the public record, and the floor is yours, sir.
I'm Dan Sefner, President of Destination Rapid City. I want to thank the mayor and the council for giving me this 2 minutes and 50 seconds that I have left right now. Really what I want to do, this makes my life pretty easy tonight. I want to remind council and members and everyone here in the community that tomorrow night, we have a mixer, downtown mixer at Prairie Edge, and a walk-through of Main Street Square. Bring your snow boots. Someone said we're going to cancel that. I said, oh, no, we'll do a fox and goose track the size of the ice rink if we have to, and we'll have a lot of fun doing it. So truly, it's going to be a very fun night, very casual. Tomorrow night, we start at Prairie Edge at 5:30. We also have a meet and greet for Megan Karbowski, who is a graduate from Stevens High School. She is an events coordinator. We have kind of taken her out of the Omaha, Nebraska market, and so truly, it'd be great to have everyone come and meet her. I want to run through quickly, and I know my time is limited, of Destination Rapid Cities, we just had our annual meeting, 2010 accomplishments. You know, a year goes by pretty fast in all of our lives. 2010, Destination Rapid City, passage of Downtown Business Improvement District, obtained approval of 2012 funds for Main Street Square. approval of 2012 funds for Main Street Square, added two new kiosks, making our kiosk locations up tonight, implemented the Downtown Green Team, which we see every single day working downtown, cleaning and making our safes cleaner and safer, working very close with the Downtown Task Force. We have now started a new recycling program in the downtown area, working very close with one of the refuse companies. You will see more cans going up, recycling. We have never had that downtown in my 35 years of being here. So it's pretty exciting to see that we are moving forward with the right things. We continue to work with downtown planning and events. Our 4th of July event in Memorial Park, this year will be absolutely fantastic. My thanks to the mayor, to city for supporting us on this. We have a fireworks display. We have events starting with the Air Force Band at 3:30 in the afternoon on the 4th for Independence Day. It will be truly very phenomenal for downtown Rapid City. We've kicked off Experience Downtown in Rapid City, a marketing program. We have advertising out for that. We've partnered with the CVB, this was in 2010, for the first downtown tourist map. Last year, we gave out 4,000 downtown alone. Created, printed, and distributed over 5,000 downtown shopping brochures. This was all in 2010. And we revised our Rapid City Downtown webpage. These are just bullet points of some of the things that Destination Rapid City did in 2010. Our future grows even brighter. We are moving forward. Of course, now, we work closely with the completion and the construction work of Main Street Square, working close with city engineers to make sure all that is on task. Boy, goals in progress. We're working closely with DOT. If you've flown into Rapid City, and you've landed at the airport, obviously, and you're driving into town, there's no signs that say Downtown Rapid City. None. If you're coming from Keystone, and you've just visited Mount Rushmore, there's no sign that says Downtown Rapid City. It works you around it. It doesn't work you through it. We're working very closely to make sure that Downtown Rapid City is recognized. We have a great city. We have a lot of wonderful things going on. Let's let people know where we are. Some of those things have been missing. So our meetings are coming very close. Speaking of military tonight, this Thursday, I'm going to Ellsworth Air Force Base with some of my staff, and we are meeting with Military Affairs to make sure that we have an Ellsworth Air Force Base night every month, minimum, maybe two. It's very important to the growth of downtown. Why are we not connected with Ellsworth Air Force Base? We need to have close connection. They are truly a sister in our region. So again, there are just many things, and I can't get through it in this amount of time, but I want to thank you for all the support the council has given us, city has given us, the mayor has given us, and the city officials that work so darn hard to see that this city moves forward. And every one of you that I have met with over the course of the last year and a half spend an awful lot of time of what you do. So again, thank you very much, and I hope to see you tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Sefner. Just so you know, for elected officials to show up, if you give us free food, we're coming. That's the way it works. And if you give us an open mic, we'll never leave. Okay, any additional speakers during the public comment period? I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Anyone else wish to speak to any issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. We're on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 3 through 83 inclusive. Chair would look for motion to open the public comment period on items 3 through 68 inclusive, please.
Still move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. We are taking public comment on items 3 through 68 inclusive. I do have a number of speaker request forms. First one is from Nick Kennison, item number 40, everyone. There again, Nick, if you'd come forward, identify yourself for the record, and then if you just watch the lights, you will have three minutes.
Is there a way I can get this hooked up?
Yep. Tell you what, if we could have one of our IT comes, he'll get that hooked up, and then... Go ahead. Dave, you got it? Dave, you got it?
Looks like you can't get it up right now.
Okay, Dave, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Mr. Kennison, if you wanted to go ahead and just, my apologies, we don't have that working for you, but go ahead and proceed, please.
Okay. My name's Nick Kennison. I'm a resident here in downtown. My presentation was actually slides describing different types of clutter that we have here in Rapid in terms of visual clutter. You have utilities that are in the way of signage, so you have signs that are built extremely tall and extremely short. You also have signs that are inappropriately sized for the business that they advertise. And then you also have an issue with on-premise and off-premise signage as a whole. I really wanted to talk about this tonight because of item number 40. There has been an effort in Rapid by a loud minority to get this on the ballot, to take the power away from the city to regulate billboards and other digital signage that's going up in Rapid. You know, as I said, they're a loud minority. And the most frustrating thing about this is the people that are spearheading this. They claim to represent Rapid City's best interests and the people of Rapid City, but in reality, they look after their own interests and their own desires and their own vision of Rapid City. And I just want to talk about that as well. In the spirit of full disclosure, we have a certain individual that has been on the task force twice, talking about the billboard task force and sign code task force. And it is increasingly evident that at least her has been actively participating in planning an effort to undermine the task force for which she serves and undermine the goals and policies of our city council. Scenic Rapid City has been collecting signatures over the month of March as part of an ongoing mission to take power away from the city to regulate all these aspects of billboard signage. The system, this system that they propose has no oversight and will likely end up with billboard zoning laws being directly regulated by Scenic Rapid City under the direct oversight of Lisa Modric and Deborah Jensen. I charged that Lisa Modric, as president of Scenic Rapid City, while working for the city to address the sign code issues knowingly and willfully violated the city's policies and procedures to undermine the ad hoc sign revision task force for which she serves.
Nick, if you could, I'm going to give you just a few seconds here. My apologies for interrupting you, but we do have a three-minute time limit, and your time is up, but I'm going to give you about 15 minutes or 15 seconds to wrap up, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
She willfully violated the city's policies and procedures to undermine the ad hoc sign task force and thus compromised her effectiveness on the sign task force. It is my recommendation that should be removed from this task force immediately, and the task force start over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Fred Thurston. Fred here. He's out in the hallway, isn't he? Good evening, Fred. Just so you know, your name is up, so if you'd please introduce yourself, identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Fred Thurston. Thank you very much for listening to me. I presume we're on item 40. This is an important item. This is an item that is being misunderstood or being mis marketed. And there are those who are saying that what we are out to do is reduce billboards, and that they're making a general statement about all billboards. This is focusing on off-premise billboards, not on-premise. We need to get a handle on the billboards. We need to stop the proliferation of billboards. We're not asking to take billboards down. We're not asking for a change in size of the present law. But what we want is for you to give us time to let the people speak in June as to what the population of Rapid City wants. We need a moratorium on off-premise billboards. You have the ability to do that. We're asking, we have asked before, you've seen in the paper this week, that there are those who are, who don't care about the public's opinion. They want to put up billboards thereafter what they want, not what the public wants. You are elected to support the people of Rapid City and what the people of Rapid City want. Listen to the people of Rapid City. Stop the additional billboards going up for off-premise advertising until the people have had a chance to speak and tell you what they want. Please, this is really important. It's important to the future of Rapid City and the Black Hills. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Vern Goodsell. Item number 40, everyone. Good evening, Vern.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Vern Goodsell. I'm an attorney with Goodsell Quinn Law Firm, and I'm here to speak as counsel for Scenic Rapid City in regard to the billboard issue. They've asked me to address several issues. The first is the petition itself. The petition has been drafted under the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, the statutes and the regulations and ordinances of the city. It's in proper form. It's been accepted by the city, so there is no form or procedural problems. Furthermore, there was no formal objection on form or procedure. That means it goes the next step, and that goes to the ballot, which is where it's at right now. There's been several other issues raised in this regard. First is that there is a possibility of a restraining order, a declaratory judgment. That's not likely, because in order for you to do that, you have to come to this body and say there's some procedural defect in the petitions in terms of the form or the signing. That's not done. So it's been waived, and you can't go to the court and ask relief if you haven't exhausted all of your remedies. The second part is, is that the courts will not interfere with constitutional and statutory processes for an initiative. It's a longstanding aspect of the South Dakota Constitution. It has a unique heritage, and the courts will not step in and prohibit voters from voting. And finally, if there is a declaratory judgment started, there's no basis for it. If there's no basis for it, the courts will hold the party starting that responsible for all costs. That means the taxpayers or the cities does not have to bear any cost of the litigation. And finally, is that the damage provision is one that is severable. So if there is no taking, there's no possible way to take land without compensation, and if the court would rule that way, that provision is taken out, and it's not enforceable. So this is the tradition that allows the electorate to tell to the government what they would like done. And no one knows how to take care of Rapid City better than the citizens of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a speaker request form from Jim Shaw, item number 40. Good evening, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name is Jim Shaw, citizen of Rapid City. I'm also a part of the ad hoc group Scenic Rapid City. As some of you know, people in Rapid City have been working on the issue of the proliferation of billboards in our community for many, many years, going back at least 20 years that I can recall. Finally, it's come to let's have the citizens tell us what they think. We have gathered 4,500 signatures, way more than the necessary number. Obviously, we hope for a good turnout in the June election. We're confident of our position, however, we're also more than willing to say, let the citizens decide. Tonight, I would ask you to either impose a formal moratorium, or if not a formal moratorium, to continue any items that may come before you for new billboards. That includes digital billboards until after the citizens have spoken. It's only two months away, less than two months now. Mr. Goodsell referred to the referendum and initiative provisions of the South Dakota Constitution. As you know, South Dakota was a leader way back in the early part of the century in putting this provision in our constitution. We're proud of the heritage, and that's the reason that we, one of the reasons we have brought this forward. It's a difficult issue, we understand, and so let's let the citizens decide. This is a grassroots effort, and the point has been made, but just to reaffirm, we are talking strictly about off-premise signs. We're not talking about on-premise. We are not talking about taking away any signs. All of the billboards, including digitals, that are presently up in Rapid City will stay up if this should pass in June. So we're talking about future billboards, future additional billboards that we would like to see not happen, and we would ask you to side with the voters and put off any decision on new applications until after the June election. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Al Beasley, item number 40. Good evening, Mr. Beasley. If you'd please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Sure. My name is Larry Beasley. I'm a resident here of Rapid City. I've been here for about 30 years. I'm here to support the request just made by Mr. Shaw regarding a moratorium. To clear up just a quick thing on that, it's been hashed and rehashed several times, but this only, this moratorium that we think is in order would only refer to off-premise signage. It would have nothing to do with signage that's out of place of business. Also, it would only refer to new billboards. It wouldn't have any effect on those that we have in town already, which are about four times as many per capita, by the way, as Denver has. Several times more per capita than Sioux Falls has as well. About 4,000 voters have requested that we take this to an election. That's only a couple of months away in June. And what this will do, if it does pass in June, and we believe that it is likely to do so, what it'll do is just limit the future growth and the future proliferation of billboards. It won't affect the billboards that we already have here. This is a good chance, I think, for people in city government, and particularly the city council, to take the high road, do what is best for the long-term, long-term of Rapid City, and to listen to the voters, listen very carefully. And I think, I think they're going to speak, I think they're going to speak on June 7th. I think a moratorium will be in the long-term best interest of Rapid City. I think a moratorium will be in the long-term best interest of Rapid City. And on another matter that just came up a few minutes ago, by the way, regarding the task force, I've been to a couple of meetings of the task force, and I know that there's obviously some conflict there where people are trying to decide what to do, but it kind of reminds me a little bit of two foxes and a chicken. They're trying to decide what to have for dinner. So I think we need to wait, pull back a little bit, and see what happens in a couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Peterson, item number forty. Again, Mr. Peterson, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Jim Peterson, Rapid City, South Dakota, I'm the chair of Scenic Rapid City currently. I just wanted to address a couple of issues that have been sort of bantered back and forth between this dais, as a matter of fact. There's a misconception that we're an adversarial group here, that I've heard the term "sign haters." There's no sign haters in my group. There's community lovers. They are trying to make their community a better place. They have no vested interest in this. They have no financial interest in this. They have no business interest in this. They simply want to make our community a better place. And on the other side are vested financial interests that could make millions of dollars depending on the decisions that you make and the ad hoc task force makes. So that's the dynamic we have going here. The vested interests, the vested financial interests have been here time and time and time again, giving you this, what amounts to propaganda. And I've had it thrown back at me, like somebody told me just the other day from this dais, that they haven't put up a sign in over five years when there's one two-hundred yards away over there, that digital sign. The sign companies say it's not a new sign unless they put up a new pole, but your constituents think it's a new sign. If it's a static sign, they take it down and they put up a big giant $150,000 digital sign. That's a new sign, your constituents. If they put another billboard on an existing pole, that's a new sign, even though they don't call it that. So there's a lot of misconceptions, and I just want to clarify some of them up. The, let's see, the other thing is that this thing about we have such a rigid sign code currently. Well, if that's the case, you would ask yourself why we have four times as much per capita square footage in signs as Denver does, or a smaller city, as Sioux Falls does, four times as much. It's because of a lax sign code, and maybe the sign code hasn't been that lax, but the administration of it has. We actually have a pretty good sign code, but what has happened time and time and time again has been undermined, which is what we've been accused of doing, by variances. Almost the great majority of the signs in this community are out-of-compliance signs that have been given variances one after another. This was okay this time, this time, this time, this time, and eventually you have hundreds of out-of-compliance signs. So that's the process that we want to nip in the bud. We want to give you a tool. We want to work with you. We're working in concert with the ad hoc committee to rewrite the sign code, and that's what we're all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Also have a speaker request form from Lisa Modric, item number forty.
Lisa Modric, a citizen of Rapid City and also president of Scenic Rapid City Committee, Inc., and I thank you, Mayor and City Council, once again for allowing us to speak before you and continuing to have a need, obviously, for an item number on the agenda. And I also thank you, each and every one of you. We've come a long way, baby. It's been a year and a half that I've been coming forward, talking about one sign, and then there was another one, and then there was another one, and we've taken a look at this hard and long. There's been a lot of study, and I see that there's task force members in here as well as citizens, business owners, community leaders, just everything you can imagine, just housewives. We're all here, and we all have our view of how our city is, where it was, and where it's going. And as with that in respect, I truly praise you for embracing this process, for supporting it to the point where we've made it this far, and for your work to assist us through a ballot initiative by having it on the ballot. And now the next step, as had been requested both by the task force in January as well as by Scenic Rapid City Committee and other citizens, now's the time to moratorium. The writing's on the wall, and it's in the press, and we need to make sure that we don't let anything happen yet before task force comes before you and before votes come before you, so that our city is protected for its future. And again, this is all about the future. As already been stated, it's not taking anything down. The hundred and ninety-six poles of billboard stay in place. It really is regarding our future, our safety, our beautification, and our need for development and growth the right way. And as we continue with plans throughout our city, throughout our roadways, developing our tourism, our economics, our businesses, we need to be sure we include what we're going to look like and welcome our visitors, show our best, and be our best, and thank you all for keeping Rapid City scenic.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Quasny, item number forty, everyone. Again, Mike, if you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Quasny, citizen of Rapid City, lived here all my life, proud of Rapid City. I like what we have here. I think we're in a position right now where we have to make some choices. We are asking you tonight, as I did two weeks ago, and I don't know if you remember, I specifically asked that a freeze be put on, and in that timeframe, what's happened is our city officials had to, our city had to deny twelve billboards. If a freeze was on, I don't think we'd have to go through that process. It would be obvious where we are. So I ask you tonight to please do that for the good of Rapid City. One or all of you can do it. I think it should be taken as a vote tonight, and a freeze, moratorium, whatever you want to call it, should be put on so that the message is clear till the people of Rapid City have voted. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We also have a speaker request form from Patricia Pummel, item number forty, everyone. Again, Patricia, just please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. How are you, Mayor and Council? My name is Patricia Pummel. I'm here on behalf of the Scenic Rapid City. I'm speaking toward the moratorium, hopefully, that will pass tonight, and I'm just gonna make some comments. If you haven't picked up this booklet, Billboard Blight, Fighting Billboard Blight, An Action Guide for Citizens and Public Officials, comes from Scenic America, and it has everything and anything that you'd ever want to know about billboards and billboard blight throughout America, for that matter, many cities. I'm just gonna read you a few items in here that are pertinent to tonight's discussion, one including billboard control, which protects natural beauty, the environment, and the character of our communities. Billboard's been called many things, among them visual pollution, sky trash, litter on a stick, and junk mail on American highways. Nothing can destroy the distinctive character of our communities and the countryside quicker and more thoroughly than uncontrolled billboards and signs. Billboard control enhances quality of life and local economies while allowing businesses to sell their products and services more effectively at a lower cost. Billboard lobbyists like to create doomsday scenarios, i.e. restrict billboards, they say, and your city's economy will crash. In fact, the opposite is true. Communities that restrict billboards always enjoy high quality of life, good reputation, and thriving economies. In regards to the moratorium, it says stopping new billboard construction. You know billboards are affecting your community. Before you can make this situation better, you have to stop it from getting worse. The single most important step in any community is to take billboard blight, is to put, pass an ordinance that prohibits construction of new billboards. And lastly, a little history from, this is a comment made from the president of Scenic America, and she suggests that Thomas Jefferson urged Americans to design communities so that we are continually surrounding ourselves with beauty. Imagine his reaction were he to ever enter our city, witness billboard operators clearcutting public trees for their private benefit, or observe the billboards that blight the dramatic western landscapes first explored by Lewis and Clark. Surely, he would call on the cities, the counties, and Congress to speak for the land, to clean up the mess, and to solve the problem of billboard blight. Thanks so much for listening to me tonight, and good luck.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Ron Sasso, item number forty, everyone. Again, Ron, if you please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Ron Sasso, and basically wanted to, I believe that the council in the past has done a moratorium. Actually, I believe Dave Davis, when there was, the task force was coming up with recommendations, with this going to a citywide vote, putting a moratorium in place would make sense. Leaving it in the hands of the citizens would make the most sense. I know when this first came forward, I had concerns and was seeing things on the internet from the sign companies saying this is in violation of state law, and I met with Jason Green, who assured me it does not. We had another attorney indicate that it does not violate state law, so I believe it would be truly in the best interest, and I believe that as council members, I know all of you, I believe, would make the right decision, place the moratorium until after the vote, let the citizens decide, leave it in their hands. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. We're dealing with items three through sixty-eight inclusive. Is there anyone else in the audience who wish to speak to any item three through sixty-eight inclusive? If not, the chair will look for motion to close the public chamber period on items three through sixty-eight inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. These consent items are items three through sixty-three inclusive, three through sixty-three inclusive. Chair would ask if any items three through sixty-three need to be pulled from the consent calendar. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull item forty-one.
Whoops, thank you, item forty-one. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent calendar? We're dealing with items three through sixty-three inclusive. If not, the chair will look for motion to approve the consent calendar, item three through sixty-three inclusive, with the exception of items sixteen and forty-one. Okay, and item forty. One more time. Chair will look for motion to approve the consent calendar, the consent items, items three through sixty-three, with the exception of sixteen, forty, and forty-one. Do it. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number sixteen, and let's see, Deb, would you please read that in?
Number sixteen is authorize staff to advise, advertise for bids for Signal Hill Sidewalk project number SWK eleven nineteen forty-four, CIP number fifty-five zero eight six nine, estimated cost one hundred and seventy-five thousand. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, at this time, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Alderman Hadcock for her hard work in getting these sidewalks put in for this long, long awaited for. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's put it to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mr. Wyfenbach, but I'd also like to thank the team that helped get this done. It was Dale Tech that went out and looked for those, that sidewalk and got the information. Barb Garcia that brought this forward with me to Public Works, which Robert Ellis and Dale Tech took a look at. This is a long-awaited sidewalk for Signal Hill or Star Village. I live below Star Village, and there's many kids and handicapped people walking down that hill with no sidewalk. It's a life safety issue, and that's why this was brought forward, and I'd like to thank that team of people that got this done with me. It was a great opportunity to take care of some of the citizens up on Star Village and other citizens of our community that like that hill that would like to walk or run it. So thank you very much, and thank you to the team of the Public Works and Barb Garcia. And also, one more person, Malcolm Chapman, also gave me the suggestion of where we could go to look for the cash flow to help the citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, dealing with item number sixteen, which is authorize the staff to advertise for bids for the Signal Hill Sidewalk, estimated cost one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, we are on to the item number forty, please.
Number forty is acknowledge discussion on full disclosure on billboard petitions, and I move to acknowledge the report.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the January three twenty-eleven minutes on page seven. There was a discussion that night on extending the moratorium until tonight, and that vote failed at the city council on a five-to-four vote and to extend that moratorium. So my question is for the city attorney's office. Jason, what is the process for the city council to bring forward a discussion on a moratorium, and can a council member who was not on the prevailing side on January three bring forward a discussion for a moratorium that failed on January three?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney. Jason, I think you understand the question, don't you?
I think I do. The process generally would be for an Alderman to have the item added to one of the committee agendas. It's probably a legal finance item, but it really could go to Public Works. Once it's added to the agenda, the committee would make a recommendation to the council, which would show up on your following meeting agenda. At that point in time, the item would be properly in front of you for action. With regard to whether it would be a reconsideration or not, I'd have to take a look at the minutes, but based on the recitation that you provided, Alderman Quaker, it sounds like that motion was one to extend an existing moratorium. I believe imposing a new moratorium would be a completely separate action that would not require reconsideration or someone to be on that prevailing side. It would be new entirely.
Okay. Mr. Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So you would not recommend doing this tonight. You would recommend running it through the committee, the committee process?
Mr. Green.
That's correct. There's nothing on the agenda tonight about moratorium. I think that there's a potential problem there if the council were to act on it tonight.
Okay, all right. So can the council, can there be a motion offered? Would it be out of order to offer a motion that put this on Public Works for discussion? Or would it be better if council member or community member added it to Public Works or legal and finance for a discussion?
Mr. Green.
I think it would be best if the council can find its action to the item on the agenda tonight. Any individual councilman can have an item added to the, either the legal finance or the Public Works agenda, so I don't think there's any action that's necessary from the council to get that done tonight.
Okay. And just in closing, I think it's important to state that we wouldn't be having this level of a discussion tonight if the moratorium had been extended in January until tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green, do you have anything else? Got your light on. Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Green.
Go ahead, please.
In understanding your position, if someone on the prevailing side wanted to reconsider, they could? Is that the?
Let's go to Jason Green. I don't believe that's correct. Go ahead.
I don't think that's possible at this point. In order to reconsider, you have to give notice of your intent to ask for reconsideration at the meeting where the action is taken, and that item has to then be disposed of at the following meeting, so we're completely out of time to reconsider that. In any case, that moratorium expired, so there would be a new moratorium.
Is our, I have another question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Under the prevailing rules right now, are those all use on review, so they have to come to the council anyway?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
I believe that they are all conditional uses, and use on review is the former term, but conditional use, we're talking about the same process. I don't believe there's a zoning district where they're simply permitted uses.
I'm gonna make one suggestion, and I'm gonna go to Paty. Some actually had a, basically, use on review or conditional use, and the requirement was for a major amendment to that, so it's a combination of the two. With that, Mr. Wyfenbach, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, I could stand here pretty well rested assured that because the petition's going through that I don't think that there's gonna be any of them passed, if they've been already denied. If they come forward to the council, I can't imagine that the council would pass them until this petition went forward. I mean, I'd be willing to say that for myself, for my position, so anything else is, you know, if we wanted to have a moratorium, it'd be the same difference for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, motion on the floor is to acknowledge the discussion. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you. I too believe that at this point, because of the conditional use and the information we need, there wouldn't we need, there wouldn't need to be a moratorium. This council, and I think, I'll talk for myself, we're leaving it in the hands of the citizens. It's time, if that vote passes or doesn't pass, then it's up to the community how we move forward. And our job after that fact, and I did talk to one of your members today about this, that's what we act on. And we believe that we are going to, or I believe the citizens will speak one way or another. And I believe in the end, what they speak is what we follow through on. And again, if conditional uses and stuff go forward at this point, I don't think, in my case, or my opinion, like Mr. Wyffenbach, that we would like to hear the citizens' voice before we start passing or not passing other billboards. So, again, you can put the moratorium, or you can do these things, but we are listening. We are listening, and we do want the people to speak, and that's the bottom line. The voters will speak on June seventh, and that's where we'll make our decisions. That's why I believe we'll make our decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for everybody's information, I think there's enough interest in, in a discussion on the moratorium that I will place that on the Public Works agenda.
Very good. Oh, we, we can't take that up tonight. They'll be, any individual council member can actually do that on the agenda. Okay, further discussion, the motion on the floor tonight is to acknowledge the discussion on the full disclosure of billboard petitions. Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank Alderman Waugh, and I wasn't, so, was that Mr. Mason that seconded? Because one of my concerns is that even though we have use on review, that the last time there was a lawsuit from the billboard company because they did not like our ruling. And so I do think we need to seriously consider a moratorium so that we can protect ourselves as best as we can until the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the discussion. See no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deb, could you please read in item forty-one, please?
Forty-one is acknowledge Rapid City Journal reporter Emily Rousch awards for being named Young Journalist of the Year, and I move to acknowledge the report.
Have a second. Okay, we have the motion and a second on the floor is to embarrass Emily. So, further discussion on the embarrassment motion. Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
I'd like to thank Bonnie Peterson. She brought her cake the other day. It was a beautiful cake and a, a nice gesture. We appreciated that from the council, and Bonnie Peterson was the one that brought that forward, so we appreciate that. Good job, Emily.
Very good. Any further discussion? Congratulations, Emily. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Now, we do expect a really good story in the morning. You, you have your choice of topics, but just make it, make it good. Okay, that does take us to the end of the continued, or I'm sorry, to the consent items. We are on to the non-consent items. These are items sixty-nine through eighty-three inclusive. Sixty-nine through eighty-three inclusive. Chair would look for motion to open the public comment periods on items sixty-nine through eighty-three inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We do have some speaker request forms. The first one is Fred, Fred, you're in the room again? Okay. Item number seventy-four. There again, Fred, if you would please identify yourself for the, whoops. Hang on one second. I gotta, all my staff has lights on here. Pauline?
You skipped the continued consent calendar.
Oh, darn. I'm trying to move things along. Okay. We are on to, my apologies, Fred, you'll have to wait just a second. I'm trying to, like I say, move us right along here tonight. We're on to the continued consent items, items sixty-four through sixty-eight. Are there any items that need to be pulled? Okay, very good. Chair will look for motion for approval of the continued consent items, items sixty-four through sixty-eight, please. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're still during the public comment period, items sixty-nine through eighty-three. Fred, now you're up. Item number seventy-four, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the bicycles and pedestrians of Rapid City. I really want to thank all of you for initiating the study on, on the bicycle and pedestrian paths. This is a very important item for this community, that it's a little bit about the chicken and the egg, you know, which comes first? Do you have to have the bicyclists out there, or do you have to have paths for safe transportation for the bicyclists? We have a lot of bicyclists in this town. We have a lot of pedestrians in this town. We need to create a safer means for both of them to get around so that they can indeed have a, a comfortable journey to wherever they want to go. And I think you'll see a lot more of them. I think with the high rates of, of fuel, more and more people year-round are, are out walking to work, to, to places of enjoyment, or bicycling. And I really appreciate you pushing this through. There's, I think, another comment period that'll go through now, and I think some refinement will take place. So I'm, I'm really pleased that that's gonna happen. It reminds me a little bit of the Mickelson Trail, when I was on the first committee to, to put that in place, that there was lots of the same comments, how we pay for it, who's gonna use it, it's gonna be trashed, the, the neighboring landowners didn't like it and fought some legal battles against it. But I think you know that it's probably one of the highlights of the, of the hills. It is used by, on, on one three-day weekend, between six and eight hundred people ride the Mickelson Trail. It's a terrific piece for the hills to, to bring the tourists in, and it's, it's popular throughout the United States and world. We get riders from all over the world coming to ride the Mickelson Trail, both on the one-day trek and the three-day trek. So, thanks, and please, find the funds to do some of the simple things to start with and expand it so we have safe bicycling and pedestrian walkways throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Olson, item number seventy-four. Hi, Jim, please identify yourself for the record.
Jim Olson. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. I'm also here in support of the, the bicycle study and the, and going forward with this project, this plan and this process. Many of you know that I ride a bicycle fairly regularly as a commute to work, and ride it for recreational purposes, just for plain enjoyment on the weekends. And I, I'm, like Fred, really am excited to see this process taking place. I'm also excited to see that it's including pedestrian studies and, and plans in the process as well. We're gonna see more and more needs for these things in our community as the community continues to grow its downtown environment. We need to have ways for people to, to come to the downtown area, to enjoy the things that we have downtown that we're developing, and to be able to come there without having to drive a vehicle down there. When gasoline gets up to five or six dollars a gallon, which I read in the paper today is not that far away, these are things that a lot of people are starting to think about, is, what's another way for me to get around in the community? And walking, riding a bicycle, good ways to get around. They're also good for you. Many communities have started them just for health reasons alone. But what we're really, we're really excited about is to see the process that's getting developed here, and it's looking into and developing ways for this to tie our community together with, with means for people to travel by bicycle and to walk. One of the things as a rider that I notice is that many times, because of, of a narrow street or a narrow lane, there's competition for the lane between the bicycle and the automobile. Part of what we need to do as part of this process is to develop an education program as to where does the bicycle rider belong, where do the automobiles belong? Everybody needs to know that bicycles are vehicles and are governed by the same rules, and bicycle riders need to know that and become predictable in how they ride. And I think this is, this is a good process for this community, and what we can all, something we can all learn from and grow with, and really develop that culture for our community. It will not only work towards enhancing these facilities, but safety for our community and opportunities for our young people to get around in the community, as well as some of our more senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We also have a speaker request form from Barry Jones, item number seventy-four, everyone. Hi, Barry, if you please identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, Barry Jones, a citizen of Rapid City for twenty-three years. I'm here in support of the study and ask the council to do everything in your powers to move this into the action mode. I've been a bicycle commuter almost every day for about the last ten or fifteen years in Rapid City. Rain, snow, sleet, fog, and I commute probably in the neighborhood of about a hundred and fifty miles a week. And, and this is a wonderful program to provide community information and education, as Mr. Olson has mentioned. There's just a lack of understanding by cyclists and motorists as well, what the responsibility of each other is. We have some huge areas in our community that are, are lacking safety, getting across Omaha, getting through the gap. I think a lot of the motorists in our community think that everybody that rides a bicycle should be on the bike path. And I think that everybody that rides a bicycle thinks all the motorists should be on the interstate highways. But the real issue is that the bike path doesn't go everywhere that people are commuting. And I practice anesthesia in Rapid City, and I deal every day with cardiovascular kinds of issues, diabetes, morbid obesity. And when you look at what our state is doing with Medicaid and things like that, and what the price of fuel is, these are huge issues, and they affect the citizens of our state and our community. And this is a very worthwhile and very needed process to engage the community in discussion and education, and I support it highly, and I just thank you for your consideration and your efforts on this behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. We also have a speaker request form from Larry Masek, items number seventy-five and seventy-six, everyone, seventy-five and seventy-six. Evening, Larry. If you'd just go ahead and come forward, identify yourself for the record, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, hi, I'm Larry Masek. It's kinda tough to, to follow item number seventy-four here, or the support of, but I want to let everyone know I do support bicycle and pedestrian walkways, as long as it's done in a proper manner. I'm here to speak on, on actually, item number seventy-six, to sign a waiver of rights to protest the future assessment for sidewalk improvement on North Highway seventy-nine, also known as DeWitt Avenue. My wife and I have a lot on, have a lot that we're developing at thirteen twenty-nine DeWitt Avenue. This lot is approximately one mile from Omaha Street on the west side of DeWitt Avenue. We have several reasons for our request. First, DeWitt Avenue is about two, two miles long from Omaha Street to Interstate ninety. Over ninety-five percent of DeWitt Avenue has already been developed. There is no other sidewalk, which means I would be the only property to have sidewalk on DeWitt Avenue. Second, while little foot traffic there is, I do recognize that there is some dirt paths, but they are, that they are on the east side of DeWitt Avenue, and they basically start from Omaha Street and they go a few blocks. I very rarely see a person on my side of the street. Third, I'm very concerned about plowed snow that ends up several feet deep on a curbside walk. I'm just wondering, will I have to maintain the only sidewalk on DeWitt Avenue during the winter months? In conclusion, I would like to delay my installation until the city is ready for the property owners of DeWitt Avenue to install sidewalks. When that happens, rest assured, I will be a very willing participant. We have signed this waiver of rights to protest, and we hope that you will approve item number seventy-six, authorizing the mayor and the financial officer to sign it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We also have, you know, I'm gonna take these just a little bit out of order, because I know item eighty-two is gonna probably take some time here. We do have a speak, a couple speaker requests on item number eighty-three from Lisa Modrick. Is Lisa here? Okay, let's go to Mike Wozni, item number eighty-three. There again, Mike, if you please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Wozni, and I actually would like to thank Aaron for his service on the ad hoc committee. I think that it was a committee that was, especially during this time right now, it was a pretty tough committee to have. And if you want to talk politics, there was some serious politics in that committee. And I don't know how you kept it going, Aaron, sometimes. So, my recommendation would be that I think with the environment we're in, with the billboards and with the people talking, I think that the committee should dissolve. I think that there's a lot of politics taking place. I think there's been a lot of mudslinging. I think we've seen charities drawn into it, whether it's ducks, or whether it's cars with writing on them, or whatever. I think that there is a lot of items on the committee, or in the ad hoc, that have been thrown in here, and I think that they're probably, I've went to many meetings, I think they're probably at an end. I think they should end, so that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And let's see, did I see Lisa come in? Lisa Modrick, item number eighty-three.
Lisa Modrick, citizen of Rapid City, and I want to just thank Aaron, I truly do. Aaron, I have watched you through a very fascinating process, certainly for me, and under your leadership and the growth of the leadership on such a difficult task force that you were on. I truly appreciate how, how the task force developed. There was truly a development. I think if we watched a film of us from back in November and a film of us from these last couple of weeks, we'd all be saying, who is that? And so, again, it's in great appreciation of the job that you did, as well, well as the fellow task members, because the task isn't easy, it wasn't easy, and it's still not easy. There's still plenty of things that need to be done. We, we worked hard to try to fulfill that task, and having been on task force number one, I want to make sure that our council is aware how hard this task force worked on all sides, understanding the, the need from every issue, from the on-premise to off-premise, whether it was banners, whether it was charity. It was a difficult, difficult task, and each of us that are here today truly took it extremely serious. And I would like to make sure that you're all aware of that, that it was a, a serious commitment. It was rare that somebody missed a meeting. If they did, it was usually only because they were out of town. Otherwise, they were there, they left their businesses, they left their homes, they did their research, and I, I'm proud to say that I'm glad to have served, and I, I wish you well as you proceed forward with reviewing the tasks at hand when they come before you. And once again, Aaron, truly, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We also have a speaker request form from Barry Hoyt, item number eighty-three. Barry? There again, Barry, if you just please identify yourself for the record, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I am the vice chair of Aaron's task force, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm here tonight to assist in any way that I can, answer any questions that might arise that Aaron can't handle. I'm thinking he's probably pretty capable. But I did want to at least let you know that I was here, and I echo everything that we had to say about the work that the task force members have, have put into this effort. I would point out to you that I would hope you wouldn't sort of dissolve or bypass the effort that we've made. We have not solely focused on the subject of off-premise signs. We've addressed a whole variety of different issues in the sign code. We have pending, and I'm sure that Aaron will talk about this in his presentation later, we have pending, I think, between twenty and twenty-five substantive recommendations to you. And so, my plea to you would essentially be to at least acknowledge our work and give us the opportunity to present the changes that we do have to suggest to make to the code. And thanks again for your time and attention.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, now we will go to item number eighty-two. The first speaker request form is Patrick Duffy. Mr. Duffy? There again, if you would please identify yourself for the record, the floor is yours, sir.
I will. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. I am local council for Graham Construction. I am local counsel for Graham Construction, an Eagan, Minnesota, construction firm that does approximately $2 billion in revenue. They were the low bidder on the Jackson Springs project. With me tonight is Dean Thompson, a partner in the Minneapolis law firm of Febyansky, Westra, Hart, and Thompson, one of the nation's leading construction law firms. Mr. Thompson will speak to you tonight, in particular about the issues raised by the fact that my client was the low bidder to the tune of about $400,000 on this construction project. Mr. Thompson is a member of the Board of Governors of the American College of Construction Lawyers, and an expert in procurement law, which I believe tonight will be the very issue that will be facing you. With me as well is Mark Fisher, a registered professional engineer and a senior project manager for Graham Construction. Together, they will answer any questions that you have. I would, and I really, I'm a stranger in a strange land here, and, so I don't know, can I yield my time? Because I don't believe we're going to be able to cover my co-council's remarks in three minutes.
Here's what we can do, Mr. Duffy. Typically, during the public comment period, we allow three minutes per person. We do not allow yielding, but, once we take the item up, I'm sure that the council members will have a multitude of questions, and that will be the opportunity for them to ask questions of not only yourself, but also the other legal counsel that's with you.
Well, I'm, I'm here as local counsel, and if this proceeds beyond this point, I will be local counsel for Graham Construction. However, the expert is Mr. Thompson, and he would like to have an opportunity to address, I think, some of the misconceptions. I get, I've gotten the misconceptions from the newspapers. But the misconceptions that have been sold about the low bid of my client on the Jackson Springs project have impugned not only the city, not only the city's consulting engineer, but the city attorney as well. And my co-council would like an opportunity to tell you the truth about some of the issues that I know that you are vitally interested in, and with that, I will sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Nice to see you. We also have a speaker request form from Dean Thompson, item number 82. There again, Mr. Thompson, if you would just identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Dean Thompson. I represent Graham Construction Services, and as Mr. Duffy said, I'm from Minneapolis, and I specialize in construction law. Now, there's a complaint about the low bid that Graham submitted. Its bid was low by $400,000. And the complaint is this, that Graham somehow forgot to submit a missing piece of its bid, and after opening, it got to supplement its bid, and somehow got a competitive advantage. This missing piece of information was the identification of Graham's membrane filtration specialist. Well, that is just factually incorrect. Graham in its bid, submitted who was going to be its membrane specialist. In fact, that membrane specialist has worked on 24 projects. It, Graham has this capacity and, and knowledge in-house, but after it submitted its bid, the engineer asked Graham, could it supplement that experience, just for the city's benefit and assurance? And Graham said, well, we'd like to be a good partner, certainly we'll supplement. But they did submit the form, so Graham did comply with the rules. And even though it complied with the rules, its competitor asked that Graham and the city be punished by accepting a bid that's $400,000 higher, even though it complied with the rules. But let me quickly make an assumption about something that didn't happen. Let's assume, for the sake of argument only, that Graham didn't submit its filtration specialist form. Even if it didn't, the question is, does the city have to reject Graham's bid for that? And the legal answer is, no. And that's because there's a distinction between bid responsiveness and bidder responsibility. Bid responsiveness deals with whether the bidder submitted a price, promised to install the quantities specified, promised to complete on time. And if you play around with those factors, well, that does give you a competitive advantage. Now, let me talk about bidder responsibility briefly. Bid responsibility focuses on whether you're a capable contractor, whether you're responsible to bid the project, or as you're building it, will your walls fall down? Now, the question about whether you're, got a proper filtration specialist is clearly a question of responsibility. Do you have the right experience to build the job? Now, why is that distinction important? Because of this. As I said, you can't change bidder responsiveness, like price and quantity, but with bidder responsibility issues, you can investigate and you can supplement after bid opening. I sent the city attorney a letter with 10 cases that said that. This is not a questionable proposition, I'm telling you. This is the law. In fact, when Chief Justice, excuse me, not Chief Justice, United States Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia was a district court judge, he held exactly that.
Mr. Thompson, that would be time, I'm going to give you about 15 seconds to wrap up, and just so you know, please keep your thoughts, because I'm sure they're going to ask you questions as we get into the item.
Thank you. Because this is a responsibility issue, and Graham did nothing wrong, the city should avail itself of the $400,000 of savings Graham's offered, because it's an unquestionably responsible bidder. It deserves the award, and it would be contrary to the public bidding statutes not to award to Graham. In fact, it would be an abuse of discretion not to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Mark Fisher, item number 82, everyone. Okay, thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from David Lust, item number 82. Good evening, Mr. Lust, nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could, I would defer to David Gustafson, he would like to precede me on the counter.
That's fine. David, if you would, why don't you go ahead and come up and identify yourself for the record. David Gustafson, item number 82, everyone.
Hi, I'm David Gustafson with Heavy Constructors Inc., representing Heavy Constructors and J.T. Jones for the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Project. I have some information I'd like to hand out. I know I sent this to everybody by email, but I would like to hand it out, if that's okay.
David, could you hand, take it down to the end of the die, so that way Mr. Gustafson can keep going?
I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff for allowing me to speak tonight on a couple of issues regarding the Jackson Springs treatment bid. As I mentioned, my name is David Gustafson, I've been a resident in Rapid City for 25 years, president currently of Heavy Constructors Inc., a construction company. We currently employ about 250 people here in Rapid City, with about 140 of those being full-time members of our staff, and have been for several decades. We currently have about six school of mines engineers on our staff, that I think is very important, as we saw up here for the award, that our school of mines kids are very knowledgeable and capable of handling projects like this, and I will go into why I think so. I ask for the record here today that future projects like this be looked at differently, to protect your local general contractors, who give a tremendous amount to this community. A year ago, there was a strong campaign for the city of Rapid City that read, "Keep Rapid City Strong." I know we committed to it, several other contractors in those letters committed to it, and I think what the whole gist of it was, was local people, local community, local strength, good contractors, good people that can build projects like this. And I, I just wanted to touch base, I would just ask, in the future, if a project similar of this nature and size comes out for the city of Rapid City, that we be looked on a little bit differently to perform the work for the city of Rapid City? Because as this project was put out, there was not a local in this community that was going to be able to bid that project, until we met with the city and the staff to change those criteria. I think that's an injustice to our community, and to our people, and how many people we support, businesses, and all the people in this town. So, I, the staff did a great job after we got the door open, and they allowed us back in, but if it wasn't for that meeting, and the mayor and the different folks that helped us with that, I wouldn't even be here today, because we would not even be able to bid the project. So, I would just ask that that needs to be looked at differently for future. The second issue at hand is, as you've heard, is the discussion about the bid process. And with that meeting, there was a process put in place, as you all know and you have paperwork, that a criteria was put in place to qualify. This process is essential to our profession and our bidding process, and the process works. As you can see by this bid, an engineer's estimate of $26,130,000 was beat in the bidding process by $5.8 million.
David, that would be time, I'll give you 15 seconds. There again, my advice would be the same, do you keep your line of thought there, because I'm sure the council have a multitude of questions for you, so if you could please just...
Well, with that, I just want to show the process works. Let's not go away from the process that the state, the statutes, and everything shows. My complaint with this process is, I believe the low bidder was allowed to supplement their package, to qualify them in a quality sense, to meet the package days after the bid date. And I'm going to leave then that up to David Lust.
Thank you. David Lust, item number 82, everyone. Mr. Leader, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. David Lust, I'm attorney at Gunnarson Palmer, representing Heavy Constructors here this evening. I think two key facts are important to keep at the forefront, and that's where I may be disagreeing with Mr. Thompson. I think it's absolutely clear that Graham Construction's bid, at the time of bid openings, did not satisfy the qualification criteria. I think it's evident by the, the stream of correspondence between Burns &amp; McDowell, the city, and Graham Construction, following the bid opening. There, they strive to get Graham Construction qualified after that bid opening. They were not at the time of the bid opening. The other key fact is, there was a pre-qualification procedure here, which five of the six contractors availed themselves of, which essentially allowed them to get qualified prior to the bid openings. Only one contractor did not use that. That was Graham Construction. They took the risk by not becoming pre-qualified, that they were not qualified at the time the bids were open, and I think we're seeing the result of that risk. Once that bid was submitted and the bids were open, no modification is allowed in that bid. That's, that's a function of state statute, it's also a function of the specifications. Section 2.4 of the specifications, specifications clearly indicates that bids cannot be modified after bid opening, and it alludes to section 518A, 5-6 of the South Dakota Code. And that code basically expressly prohibits modification of bid, or other provisions of bids, if they're prejudicial to fair competition, which is clearly the case here. The only exception to that is if there's a quote "technical irregularity." And I would submit to you, members of the council, that failing to meet the qualification criteria is anything but technical. It's so important that the city amended the contract, the specifications, to allow pre-qualification to, to occur. Qualification criteria is so important that five of the six contractors availed themselves of that pre-qualification process. They knew that if they weren't qualified when those bids were open, they're done. They don't get a chance to, to do the project. So, it's not technical when we're, when we're talking with things of, of quality. Further, I would say, what we've seen here, and what's been allowed to happen, really gets to the heart of the bidding process, and the fairness of the bidding process. By allowing one contractor to come in after the fact and use a subcontractor that others have had pre-approved to meet their qualification criteria is simply unfair, and it's a process that we shouldn't countenance as a city, or as a city council. And I would ask, for those reasons, that you reject the bid of Graham and bid to, and give it to the next lowest bidder, which would be my client. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lust. We also have a speaker request form from Anthony Beeson, item number 82, everyone. There again, Mr. Beeson, if you would please identify yourself for the record, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Anthony Beeson, I'm an engineer with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering, Denver, Colorado. I'm the project manager on the project. I'd also like to introduce Mark Liptore, my colleague who's here. Our primary function tonight is to be here to make ourselves available to, to the council, and Mr. Mayor and the staff, to answer any questions as this, as we proceed through this item. I'd also like to talk for one second about something that was discussed in last Tuesday's Public Works Committee, and I believe is in the, is in one of your packets, regarding a, a letter from Graham Construction, addressed to me, that begins, as you requested, I believe a clarification is necessary to state that I did not in fact request that Graham enter into a teaming agreement. My request was only that they document their intent with a signature by both parties, a written letter, and that's the letter that you saw in your packet. So, with that, I'll wrap it up, while I still have the green light, and thank you.
Thank you. Also have a speaker request form from Dan Michael, item number 82. Mr. Michael? There again, Dan, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
I'm Dan Michael, Rapid City, South Dakota. I work for Action Mechanical, and I'd like to clear up the record on some of the documents that were in the agenda tonight. I work for Action Mechanical, I don't work for Quinn Construction. And I forwarded an email to you all this evening before I left the office, where, in my email to the mayor, Dan Kuhn, Anthony Beeson, I, and several of the general contractors here in Rapid City, I underlined Article 8 of the specifications as they came out, and I said that, in that email to everyone, that there'd be a strong possibility that nobody in Rapid City could qualify. I wanted to clear that up for the record, and I, I think there's a process here, and I think there's a number of people that, that participate in this bidding process. And this bidding process, it's like a, it's like a golf tournament. You don't get a mulligan. And I just, that's all I'll say about that, but I wanted to clear that up, as far as I don't work for Quinn Construction, I work for Action Mechanical. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speaker request forms. We are dealing with items 69 through 83 inclusive. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to any of these items? There again, 69 through 83. If not, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on item 69 through 83 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to ordinances, and let's see, let's go to Alderman Deb Hackock, item number 69, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 69 is first reading ordinance number 5719, regulating trenching contractors licenses with the city of Rapid City by amending chapter 13.10 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion, dealing with item number 69, first reading of ordinance number 57, 19, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 70, please.
Number 70 is a request by Renner Associates LLC and Susan Liken for a layout plat located at 2727 and 2735 Jenny Gulch Road, and I approve with stiffs.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stiffs, dealing with item number 70. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 71, please.
71 is a request by FMG Engineering of Roblo, Rapid City LLC, for a preliminary plat located west of Haynes Avenue, south of Dist Drive, and north of Interstate 90, and I approve with stiffs.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, item number 71. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 72, please.
72 is a request by Frederick and Arlene White for a preliminary plat located in the southeast fourth of section 23, Pennington County, South Dakota, located 5811 Green Tree Drive. I move, approval with stiffs.
We have a motion and a second for approval by item number 72. Approval with stipulation, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 73, please.
73 is a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for a layout plat located on the south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of intersection East Anamosa Street, and north of Creek Drive, and I move approval with stiffs.
We have a motion and a second for approval, item number 73. Approval with stipulation, any discussion on that motion? Any approval? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 74, please.
Number 74 is Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Draft Report, and I move to acknowledge the report.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report, and I believe the council wanted the short presentation, is that correct? the short presentation. Is that correct, Ed?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
With that, we'll recognize Kip. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kip Harrington, Transportation Planner with Rapid City Growth Management.
I assume our technology is now working?
No, it's working just fine. Here it comes. About a year ago, we started this process, the city with, along with Alta Planning and Design.
Not quite yet. We have nothing up on the screens. Mr. Stukey, where's our... There we go. Kip, go ahead, Kip.
Thank you. We started this process about a year ago. The city, in conjunction with Alta Planning and Design from Portland, Oregon, and Madison, Wisconsin, and they're also working with Katamis Lee &amp; Jackson here in Rapid City and RDG Planning and Design in Omaha, Nebraska.
Excellent.
A little background on this. This project is to build on efforts to improve the quality of life in Rapid City and to create a network that will make bicycling and walking more viable modes of transportation and contribute to an enhanced quality of life in Rapid City and also to provide some economic development. Like I said, we started this project in the spring of 2010 with a well-attended public open house followed by a walking and biking tour of the city. Now, the purpose of this study is to develop a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and this will identify optimal biking and walking routes and preferred treatments, and will also ensure that bicycle and pedestrian facilities are considered during road maintenance and reconstruction. The vision of this project is to enhance transportation choices by developing a network of on- and off-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities to provide connections to destinations throughout the city. Along with that, there are three goals, and the first of which is to support bicycling and walking as viable transportation modes in Rapid City, also to promote bicycling and walking in the Rapid City area by improving the awareness of the existing and proposed bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and also to integrate bicycle and pedestrian planning into the planning processes of Rapid City. With that, there are a few different pedestrian facility types that we took a look at. The first, obviously, is sidewalks, which everyone is familiar with. Also looked at shared-use paths, which you may be more familiar with, is like the Greenway Trail, Leonard Swannie Swanson Memorial Pathway, some roadway shoulders which serve pedestrians in the more rural areas, and of course, we always look at ADA compliance at all intersections. Along with that, we took a look at various types of bicycle facility types and broke those up into two categories, which are off-road and on-road. Off-road starts with the side paths, which are more familiar as the wide sidewalks, like the ones along Fifth Street, Sheridan Lake Road, Park Drive, things like that. Again, shared-use paths, like the Leonard Swannie Swanson Memorial Pathway through the Greenway, and a new type of facility called a cycle track, which runs on Kansas City Street between Mount Rushmore Road and Fifth Street through the downtown area. And some of the on-road facilities that we took a look at are shoulder bikeways, which is the second picture. That's more of a rural facility, just kind of a paved shoulder marked for bicycles. The lower, the middle picture shows a bike lane, which is more of an urban facility. And then the bottom picture shows a newer facility called a shared lane marking, where the bicyclists and the motor vehicles share the road, and the bicycle marking shows where the bicyclist should ride on the roadway. In addition to that, there's a shit sign, shared roadway, which is your familiar, just bike route sign and no specific pavement treatments. A big part of this process was taking a look at destinations for pedestrians and bicyclists because we didn't want to build facilities that go where nobody wants to go. So we looked at educational facilities, obviously, all the Rapid City schools, the School of Mines, things like that, some of the major employment centers in town, the commercial areas, some of the, like North Haynes, the mall, and of course downtown, hospitals and health centers, downtown Rapid City, all the parks in the city, and of course, the Greenway, which kind of forms a spine for the system. So we took a look at the different types of bicyclists that are out there. Strong and fearless, which you can see a picture of the guys in Lycra. You see them out cruising around in packs. Enthusiast but confident, interested but concerned, which is the largest percentage of the population, and the no-way, no-how. And we'll break those down a little bit here. A very small percentage of the population is in the red, the strong and fearless, and they will ride anywhere, anytime, regardless of weather, regardless of road conditions. Mr. Jones, I believe, would be fall in that category. And then a bigger percentage of the population is enthused and confident, and these people will ride in traffic if they have the appropriate facilities, and I think Mr. Costello probably fits in that one pretty well. But by far, the largest percentage of the population is called interested but concerned. These are people that have bikes but don't ride them really outside their neighborhood or off the Greenway path, or they may have bikes that are sitting in their garage gathering dust. And they kind of want low speed, low volume, neighborhood streets, or ride off-street, and that's kind of the people we're kind of gearing this towards. We want to get those people to dust off their seats, pump up their tires, and use their bicycles in more of a utilitarian manner than just a recreational manner. And the last part of the population is called the no-way, no-how, and those are people that it doesn't matter what you do, they do not want to ride bikes, they're not interested in riding bikes, they're not going to own bikes. But this plan also provides a benefit for them because for every person that walks or rides their bike downtown, there's an open parking space that they didn't use by driving downtown. So those people have more options in parking and less congestion on the streets as well. On this map, we have a map of recommended sidewalk treatments. It's pretty extensive. I won't go into detail on this, but it is in the plan if you'd like to take a look, and it goes into more detail in the plan as well. What we did do is we prioritized those projects based on demand paths, which you see the dirt paths along roads that don't have sidewalks. That shows that people want to walk there, people are walking there, but there aren't facilities for them to walk there. Also pedestrian detractors like the library and the schools and things like that, and also roadway classification because we want to focus a lot of our facilities on roadways that are higher speed, higher volume, where it's less comfortable to walk along the roadway. And then proximity to transit is also big because that'll really enhance the pedestrian transit interface. So we had a list of priorities, and we listed this. This just lists the top five sidewalk projects. So I want to make a note, there are actually twelve that scored at the very top. These are just the first five in alphabetical order, so the whole list is available in the full report. Some of the examples are Fifth Street from south to Clark Street, just a short segment, some segments on Campbell Street, and then a segment out towards Rapid Valley along Omaha Street from La Crosse East. Here's the bikeway map. Again, it's pretty extensive. There's a lot of different facility types. The green on there kind of shows the Greenway Spine Trail, and then we kind of work out that and try to form a network throughout the rest of the city to bring the residents not only to the spine way for recreation, but also to be able to get around town to work, to school, to shopping, things like that. Again, we did prioritization with that. System connectivity, does it connect to existing facilities? Where do bicyclists want to go, bicyclists detractors? Is it a dedicated facility? Does it provide a regional benefit? And is it cost-effective? Because obviously, that's very important. And one thing I'd like to point out on this slide is this is kind of a mock-up of North Maple Avenue, what it could look like if some of these recommendations come through. Going uphill, you can see the parking lane is still there on the right. We've put in a dedicated bike lane because the bicyclist going uphill will be moving slower than the speed of traffic, and then there's still room for the vehicles going uphill. And then on the downhill segment, where there's not room to provide a dedicated bike facility, there's a shared lane marking because those bicyclists will be able to be going faster downhill and be able to keep up with the speed of traffic a little bit better. And we still have pedestrian access on both sides on the sidewalks. So this is just a little example of a couple of the different treatments and one way they could be used on a certain facility. Again, these are some of the top bikeway projects prioritized. Shoulder bikeways in rural areas like Country Road, that would be a reconstruction project, Airport Road, North Alphale Road. On-street bike lanes on Jackson Boulevard between Main and Mountain View would be great, and Mountain View Road between Omaha and Jackson Boulevard also scored very highly. And then shared lane markings on Forty-Fourth Street near Stevens High and Fifth Street through the downtown area. And even if we were to build everything right away and just put it all in place, it doesn't mean people are going to use it. So along with this, the engineering aspect becomes education, encouragement, evaluation, and enforcement. So some of the recommendations were to become a bike-friendly community, get a bicycle committee back, advisory committee back together and functioning, do some media campaigns for safety awareness, do some Bike Month activities, and Safe Routes to School, which we've recently completed with Meadowbrook School, is another key issue to getting people walking and biking. Along with this, we have a whole section, a very large section in the appendices of design guidelines based on all the current literature and organizations, and there's recommendations for both bicycle and pedestrian facilities, as well as bike parking and maintenance of the facilities. So if there's a specific treatment that we need to do on a specific section of roadway or a part of town, there's a guideline for that in the plan itself. And lastly, the implementation. Recommendation is to adopt a complete streets policy, which means that when a street is built, it's made for motorists, transit, bicycles, and pedestrians, so everyone has a bright opportunity to use it. Also recommend to dedicate capital improvement plan funds for bicycle and pedestrian projects, to implement some of the recommended bikeway projects, like we mentioned earlier, form a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, and to get the ball rolling to complete five relatively minor sidewalk infill projects. And that's all I have, and I am willing to take any questions.
Very good. The motion on the floor is for approval of the Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add that this is the draft report, so they still are taking recommendations, observations, so we can still give our input as citizens. First, I'd like to thank Kip and everyone in the Growth Management Department for going through this. It's been a long process, and it's been an involved process, and it's both of those because the pedestrian infrastructure in Rapid City historically has been poor. And I'd like to commend the councils before us who started taking efforts to solve that problem. And what's great about this is now we have a roadmap to help us when we decide to start coming through on some of these warps, to make our neighborhoods more pedestrian-friendly, to create contiguous sidewalk systems. And that brings me to the point that bicycling gets a lot of attention when we talk about this plan because the cycling infrastructure is dreadfully poor. And I'm excited about the cycling aspect, but I'm equally excited about the pedestrian aspect because we have a lot of sidewalks that lack continuity. We have people who either for, you know, personal reasons or physical reasons don't ride but choose to walk, and it's just, it makes me smile thinking that here we are putting this plan in place that is really, as Kip said, going to enhance the quality of life for all the citizens in Rapid City. And I ask them to continue playing a role because it's not finalized yet, and we need citizen input to really refine it and get it something that's going to be great for the future. So I yield.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval of the Rapid City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Draft Report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the public work items. Item number seventy-five. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seventy-five is the attic subdivision. This is an appeal of denial of a request for exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalk along Deadwood Avenue per city ordinance twelve point one six point zero eight zero of Lot B of the attic subdivision. Public Works Committee recommended denial of the appeal, and for the sake of discussion, that is my motion.
Kip, do we have a second, please? Kip, we have a motion and a second for denial. With that, let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much. In Public Works, I voted in favor of denying the appeal, and if I understand correctly, that is where we stand now.
That is the motion on the floor, sir.
After looking into the situation further and talking with the landowner and listening to how adamant and positive he is about signing the warp, it seems that as far as priorities go, this particular section is not high on my priority list. So whereas at Public Works, I was pretty adamant about, about starting the sidewalk somewhere, I do think we'd be better served starting them somewhere else than this far down Deadwood, and so thus, I cannot be in favor of the motion that I seconded, but I would be in favor of granting the appeal with the stipulation that the warp be signed. So I yield.
Kip, very good. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hatcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Aaron Costello. I looked into the warp that he's signing, which is a waiver right to protest, and that this will, when this becomes contiguous on this road, then this says that he gives his approval and that he will put this sidewalk in. He is a small business owner as well, and we did do this and continue one of the items for sidewalk on another person because of timing and financial burden, and because of this, I think this would help him out as well to get his business going and get things running. And by the time we decide to put this contiguous sidewalk in, that would help him for future assessment for his property and in his timing and financial burden at this time. So I agree with Mr. Costello, and the warp is, I think, sufficient for this.
I was going to say, did you want to make a motion?
She already spoke.
That's true. Let's go to, I'm going to go to Bonnie Peterson.
I would like to make a motion to approve the denial. I always get a little confused here when we're in the...
Let's go to Jason Green. Actually, approve the request for an exception to waive.
Grant the exception, yes.
Okay. I would make that motion.
Kip, we have a substitute motion and a second to grant the exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalks, I assume with the stipulation that the warp is signed. Is that correct, Bonnie? Okay, thank you. Very good. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would support this motion. I was against it before. I was for it. I want that. One of those examples, and like in, in Public Works, we let this one kind of get ahead of us. We didn't really think and follow through on our thought process like we should have on, on the warp, and my apologies to Mr. Moschick that we didn't talk this one through a little bit better. But this is the right thing to do in this situation, and when we get real, as he's willing to sign the warp, we, I would support then this motion as it now stands. Thank you.
Thank you. The substitute motion on the floor is to grant the exception to waive the requirement to install sidewalk along Deadwood Avenue with the stipulation that the applicant signed the warp. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number seventy-six. Alderman Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seventy-six is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver right to protest, the future assessment for sidewalk improvements for Lot B of the attic subdivision along Deadwood Avenue in Pennington County, Rapid City, and I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the warp. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-six A.
Item seventy-six A is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign letting documents for East North Street project from Pine Street to Campbell Street. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I walked these two items, seventy-six A and seventy-six B, onto the agenda tonight, and the reason for that is the DOT has agreed to pursue doing the bid letting for this project June fifteenth. In order for that to happen, these would have to be approved tonight, and because there are federal components to the funding on these projects, there are certain right-of-way certificates, utility certificates, letting authorization forms that must be signed by the mayor and finance officer. And just in an effort to expedite these two important projects that have full community support, we opted to walk these on tonight just to get those to the letting as soon as possible.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seventy-six B, please.
To authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the letting documents for the Mall Drive project from Haynes Avenue to La Crosse Street. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Pauline, the bids, please.
Number seventy-seven is for, to award the bid for an intelligent vehicle system automated voice enunciators. The, the bid opening, we only got one bid on this. Recommendation is actually to reject all bids and authorize a rebidding as the estimate was only seventy-five thousand, and the bid that came in was a hundred and forty-two thousand through seventy-six.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject all bids. We're dealing with, hang on a second, this is item number seventy-five. It's not Pauline?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Motion on the floor is to reject all bids. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Seventy-eight, please.
Seventy-eight is for the pavement rehabilitation project, number three, the Wellington Drive, Fox Run Drive, Triple Crown Court, Oak Avenue and South Boulevard area project. We received three bids on this project. Recommendation is to award the total base bid in the amount of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and seventy-five cents to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award the contractor, Simon's Contractors of South Dakota Inc., for a grand total of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and seventy-five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Number seventy-nine is for the permanent pavement marking project. We received two bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total base bid plus alternate bid one and two in the total amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars to Dakota Barricade LLC.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid plus alternate one, is that correct?
One and two.
One and two, to Dakota Barricade LLC for a grand total of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Number eighty is the Jackson Boulevard Greenway Track Utilities Project. We received five bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total base bid plus alternate bid one in the total amount of seven hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and ninety...
amount of seven hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred seventy dollars and ninety-five cents to Hills Materials Company.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Hills Materials Company, the base bid plus alternate one for a grand total of seven hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred seventy dollars and ninety-five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining from this motion, since my brother-in-law works as a superintendent for Hills Materials.
Very good. We'll make sure the record reflects that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, with Alderman Gary Brown abstaining.
Next item is for the sweeper broom refills for the street division. We received five bids on this project. Recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents to United Rotary Brush Company.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to United Rotary Brush Corporation for a grand total of sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Eighty-two, please.
Eighty-two is for the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant. This was continued from the April fourth council meeting. We did receive six bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of twenty million two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars to Graham Construction Services, Inc.
Could we have a motion, please, for a discussion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second to award to Graham Construction Services, Inc. for a grand total of twenty million two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. This has obviously been a sensitive issue and something that has taken a lot of time to look at, especially with the amount of reading material over the weekend. With some of the complications that have been brought up in this process, I guess I would like to actually consider restarting the bidding process and rejecting all bids at this time in order to move forward in a direction that shows that there is no perception of any problems. I think it's important that there is a perception that this council and the bidding process is above reproach, and I think that the image of that is sacred to the processes that we, as the city council, conduct. So I guess I would like to actually hear from my colleagues about exploring other alternatives on this bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of questions for, is it Dale Tech or Robert Ellis that's answering the questions tonight? Robert?
Why don't you put it out there, and we'll see which one wants to answer your question.
If that's okay. What does rejecting all bids do tonight, Robert, with this particular bid?
Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Public Works Director.
We have a thirty-day requirement from the time of the bid opening before you have to award the bid, and we opened this on March twenty-second, so we're quickly approaching that timeline. If you do reject all bids tonight, we would restart the advertising process, probably look at another sixty-day timeframe before we do a bid opening. There would be reissuance of the specifications, and we would, I guess, open bids and go from there. So it'd be about a sixty-day timeline.
Deb, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Per perception that we're talking about, I believe there's a process in place at this point. Robert, with Graham Construction, I'm sure you had Jason's advice on this, did they follow all the compliant rules and regulations by bidder specifications?
Mr. Ellis.
Well, I can answer your question, that in my opinion, I believe that Graham is a responsive, responsible bidder. They have a good reputation, and they were the low bidder by four hundred and five thousand dollars, and that is my opinion. That's why we're recommending award to Graham Construction Services.
Thank you. Do you, can I ask you something?
Yes, go ahead, Deb.
Do you believe that this would cost the taxpayers, in the end, a lot more money than what we're paying today for rebidding and already having the bid put out there? What would that do for the bottom line of the money spent for this to the taxpayers if this was rejected and put out there again?
Mr. Ellis?
Well, in my opinion, the problems with rebidding this project is everybody knows the price to be. It's Graham's price. So in everybody's mind, they're gonna know that if they want this project, that is the price they have to submit. And for some contractors, that'll mean trying to make up that difference through possible change orders during the project, might mean that there are some cost savings by cutting corners. Those are the potential problems I see with rebidding the project. You know, one other possible problem I see is that just this year, from the time we advertised, this was a seventy-five day advertising period, so we were advertising this project in January, and just this year alone, fuel prices have gone up seventeen percent, and construction industry is heavily reliant upon fuel, not only that, but copper and steel with this project in particular. If we introduce another sixty-day time period into this project before we open bids, that volatility in the market, which we're already seeing, may be reflected in the prices. And I guess those are my concerns with rejecting and re-advertising the bids.
Thank you.
Deb, you still have the floor, ma'am.
For Jason, we've heard tonight about procurement, pre-qualifications prior to submitting the bid. I would like to know legally, Jason, has this been bid by Graham Construction legally, and are we allowed to accept these bids because at this point, this bidding process or this pre-qualification has been complied with with all rules and regulations for which we do bidding?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As I provided the council in writing, it's my opinion that the bid from Graham meets all the legal requirements and is therefore the bid that the council should award if you choose to accept bids tonight.
Thank you. I think tonight, the perception is something that is, can be put out there in a different way. We do want the local people in Rapid City to get these bids, but we also have a process in place in which we have to follow by rules and regulations what that is and how that's done by state statute. So as much as we want our local people to get these bids and how they are put forth by process, I mean, this council is legally binding by that and can, it just seems like a pretty cut and dry case. As much, and I'll keep saying this, as much as we want those local bidders to win these bids, we have to follow process and procedure. So the perception is, some people could put out there a spin this, and that's not what we're here for. We want to legally do this correct way, by the correct way, with our Public Works Director, with our legal counsel, and it seems to this point, hopefully, there's not a spin taking it the other way, that it's done legally and we do the right thing.
Thank you. Let's go to, let's see, Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson has not had the opportunity to speak yet. We'll go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Ellis a question.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Ellis, in your previous experience with these kind of bids, the question of whether or not they meet it, in your opinion, compared to other ones, these are the kind of things that come up after the fact that you deal with? There's nothing really exceptional about this?
Mr. Ellis?
This project was different from almost any other project that we've bid in the past several years, because water treatment plants, especially treatment plants of this nature, are very rare in South Dakota. I don't know how many exist, one, two, I'm not really sure. That's why we had qualifications. We wanted to make sure that the contractor that submitted the lowest bid was also qualified to do a project like this. Now, after looking at the past experience of Graham Construction, I feel very comfortable that they can take on this project and complete it successfully. They've built these types of projects before. This is kind of their forte, and that was really the goal of the qualifications, was to make sure that we have a contractor that isn't on the job learning how to build a treatment plant on the backs of Rapid City. This is a plant that we need to have in service for decades to come, and again, after reviewing the qualifications of the low bidder, I feel confident that they are capable of taking on this project.
Okay, Bonnie, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Would you say if the bids, the two low bids were even, with them coming back after for more clarification or for the city needing more clarification, you're comfortable with where you're at on that? That this would be considered routine when you're, you know, because I know we get bids and then questions are asked, and so do you feel pretty comfortable with that? That the... I guess what I'm trying to say is that, you know, I'm trying to decide if this was handled fairly, and of course, it sounds like it was as far as legally, but I'm just wondering what your opinion is.
My opinion is, we extended the same courtesy to each of the contractors. There was nobody that was given preferential treatment. We reviewed each candidate's qualifications fairly, and when there were clarifications that were needed, we asked for those clarifications.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ellis, and I would just second what Ms. Hadcock had said about, we certainly want our local people to get business. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderwoman Hadcock and Peterson, for also commenting on this. One of the issues that has come up with the rebidding is really the delay, which can subsequently lead to increase in gas prices and other costs. One of the other issues that should also be addressed here is that we've obviously gotten two different opposing legal opinions from two different companies on this issue. The fact of the matter is that some of these legal issues could end up causing a delay as well for the city and could subsequently cause a longer delay than just sixty to ninety days. I can't tell the future and no one else can, but the question is, is are we willing to take that risk? My best outcome that I can see in this situation is that we end up with the least risk to the city, the least risk to the taxpayers, in the most expedient manner possible to get to the end product. The best way that I can find to do that is by rejecting all bids and starting clean. My concern is, is the damage that this could cause in getting our end goal of the water treatment plant, and also, again, the burden to the taxpayers. I just feel like if we level out the playing field and start from scratch, that's where we're at. Go back to square one, start over. Eliminate the arguments, eliminate the risk. I just want to reiterate some of the points that have been presented and also presented before my colleagues for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Jason Green a question.
Go ahead, please.
With Alderman Mason's theory about going back to square one, it seems like we would still be open for lawsuits for making that decision, or are we on our legal rights to just back out and redo?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you. I think it's pretty clear the council does have the legal right to reject all the bids, and it probably is the least legal risk that you have. I can tell you, though, that I'm very confident in the city's legal position if you choose to award to the low bidder. So it really is a policy question for the council at this point.
Anything else, Bonnie?
Well, I would like to just go ahead and award it, but I will see what my fine colleagues have to say on the subject. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to award the contract to Graham Construction Services, Inc. for a total bid of twenty million two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I have a question for legal counsel from Graham Construction.
Okay, go ahead, please. Can you state your question?
And my question, sir, is, you indicated earlier in your testimony that your client had met the pre-qualification criteria in the bid, and that the information that had been requested from the city was merely clarification information. Did I understand that correctly, and would you be willing to elaborate on that briefly?
Mr. Thompson, could you please identify yourself for the record and then go ahead and answer the question, please?
Dean Thompson again for Graham Construction Services. Yes, in fact, when I approached the dais, I should have brought my book with me. So if you'll permit me to go back and get it, I can put something on the Elmo to show you exactly what was submitted. Please, thank you.
Pauline, can you give him a hand there to make sure you get up on the screen?
This was part of Graham Construction's qualification submitted. As you can see, Ken Moore, Graham Construction Services, filtration specialist. This is what was requested. Now, it was within the city's rights and the consulting engineer's rights to ask for clarification about this, ask Graham Construction to supplement this. Graham Construction could have said, no, I don't want to supplement it, or as it did, it said, fine, if that's what you'd like, that's what we'll do, because that's what the law of bidder responsibility allows. In to address one point that was made, I submitted ten cases to the city's attorney supporting what I'm just saying. There is no other case that has been cited to the council to the contrary. So I am quite confident that what Graham did has been done throughout the country and can be done in South Dakota. Have I answered your question?
Thank you, and then I have a question for Mr. Ellis.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Ellis, can you, can you explain, and about two minutes and forty seconds left, can you explain why that is correct or incorrect?
Mr. Ellis, please identify yourself for the record and then proceed.
Help me understand why that information that Graham submitted isn't sufficient.
Mr. Mayor, David Lust, Gunnarson Palmer, and we have a head of construction. Well, I think clearly, the answer that was just given was incorrect. You have a string of correspondence from the engineer and architect to Graham Construction soliciting more information to make sure they are qualified. When that failed, more information about their own employees' qualifications, as was just shown to you, that failed, obviously, because the end result, the reason Graham is qualified as we speak today, not at the time the bids were open, but as we speak today, is because they went out and got a sub that was approved by one of the other contractors and plugged them in here to meet the qualification criteria, not their own employees. Has I answered your question, Mr. Quaker?
Anything else?
A question for Robert Ellis.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Ellis, have we, have we given in the past in other bids, and I know this is a unique situation in a way, but in the past, have we given other contractors the opportunity to provide pre-qualification information or select another sub after the bids have been opened?
Let's go to Robert Ellis.
In my four years here at Rapid City, we have never had qualification requirements for a condition of award of a project. This would be unique to this project as far as my experience is concerned.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions for Mr. Beeson, the project manager.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Beeson, as the project manager, you would be the one responsible for setting the criteria for this project, including the qualification statement, is that correct?
Mr. Beeson, if you please identify yourself for the record and also your company.
Sure, I'm Anthony Beeson with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering.
Okay, go ahead and answer, please.
Yes, I would be responsible for that in conjunction with our entire project team.
Thank you. And obviously, you felt that that criteria was critically important to the integrity of the project?
I did, and do.
Okay. At the time that the bids were open, did you feel that Graham met that criteria the way the bid was submitted?
No.
So then at that point, according to the documents that were submitted, that you asked them to submit a supplement?
Yes, there were, may I elaborate?
Go ahead, sir.
There were, there's a requirement for two membrane procurement, or not procurement, but membrane installation projects, and one of the projects that was listed was still under construction, so I asked if Graham had a second project that they would like to insert there.
So if this is a critical requirement for the integrity of the project, and they did not meet the critical requirement, wouldn't their bid have been thrown out normally because they weren't meeting the requirements? they weren't meeting the requirements of the bidding process?
Mr. Beeson?
If it had ended there, yeah, I believe so.
Should it have ended there? Maybe you shouldn't answer that question since you asked for a supplement. Let me move on. And that's the dilemma that I'm faced with right now. Because right now, there's no doubt in my mind that Graham is a quality firm and that they certainly can qualify. The question that I have and the one that you just answered is that they did not qualify at the time that the bids were open. Only after you asked for a supplement did they qualify. So the dilemma I'm faced with is that, do we have a legal bid? At the time that the bid was open, they did not qualify. Is that correct, Mr. Beeson?
Mr. Beeson? Or Jason, did you want to?
Yeah, I think the one thing that we're mixing up here is Graham's actual qualifications with the documentation of the qualifications. I think that if Graham's qualifications are what they are and how they're going to go about meeting the minimums that we expect, you know, that's a fact that's not in dispute. The question really is, was it sufficiently documented and was it appropriate to ask for that documentation? And I believe it was.
So let me rephrase that. If another bidder had bid the project and bid it with materials that did not meet the specifications, we probably would have thrown that bid out, correct, Mr. Beeson?
Mr. Beeson?
I guess I'm not sure.
Had we used a membrane that did not meet the qualifications that you set forward, you would probably have thrown the bid out as a non-qualifying bid.
We didn't ask for that to be, for that information with the bid. The membrane itself has been pre-purchased.
Okay. I'll find a question that you can answer. If there had been another criteria that was not met by one of the bidders, would you have thrown, suggested that that bid be thrown out?
Mr. Beeson?
If they refused to supplement their bid or their information, I would have asked that... Take, for example, there's another requirement in here to have executed three projects greater than $10 million. If those projects were still under construction, not yet completed, I would have asked that they either supplement or replace one of those projects. And if they had refused or not been able to...
I think I know where I'm going here, Mr. Beeson. Thank you. And that's part of the problem I'm facing here is that I think we have a moral obligation to the bidding process, and I don't know that we're facing it... There's a $400,000 savings to the citizens that's very important to us all. On the other hand, the potential of what's going to happen with future bidding projects if we play with the process and somehow or another, when we go back in and supplement bids after they're opened, concerns me gravely. And I think the integrity of the bid process is more important, most important at this point. I will stop with 4 seconds left. Thank you, Mr. Beeson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Go to Alderwoman Deb Haddock. Motion on the floor is to award the contract to Graham Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Hanks. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, for me, is the supplement on the bid that was supplemented, because it's a unique situation with the prequalification that we haven't used before, but had brought some cases forward on this that said that this is a bidder responsive, if not a bidder responsibility. Is the supplemental bid a responsibility, Jason, or a bidder responsivenessness?
Go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you. I think it's an issue of responsibility. The bid that was submitted by Graham was responsive to the request. They have agreed to build what we have asked them to build, according to those specifications. So the question is, can they do so? And do they meet the minimum qualifications that we've set forward?
So based on that supplement, it's legal by that prequalification to make this a bidder responsiveness, that they followed all rules and regs of this? Even with the supplemental bid, it's still a legal bid?
Jason?
Well, there wasn't a supplemental bid. And I think it's important that we be careful about that language. They provided additional information to us to show that they could meet the minimum qualifications that the city included within the specification. I believe it was legal that they did so.
Okay. Because it was a... They already had, they already had the basically responsibility of this bid being done, but they had to, because of one of their people, they had to come back and say that, okay, this guy has done this work before, but based on what they just told us again, that they needed to make this supplement in order for this to be a prequalification issue. This is what I'm... I guess what I'm saying is, boy, that's a lot of words. Again, as much as I want the local bidder to get this, I think the process was followed. I think the supplement that we're talking about was legal by standards of what I'm listening to from Jason and that Robert Ellis and his staff are willing to back that up based on prequalification or bidder responsivenessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. For the sake of discussion, I'd like to offer a motion to reject all bids and rebid the project.
Okay, we have a subsequent motion and a second to reject all bids and authorize staff to go out for new bids. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm gonna get a roll call here, because I'm pretty sure I didn't hear enough that constituted 10. Take a roll call, please.
Brown?
Let me repeat the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to reject all bids and authorize the staff to go out for new bids, authorized to go out for new bids. So, go ahead, Charlie.
Brown? Mason? Peterson? Wiefenbach? Davis? Haddock? Kroger? Costello?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Wa?
Okay, motion passes on a 6 to 4 vote. So the motion does pass, the bids are rejected, and the staff is authorized to go out for new bids. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item number 83, please. And Deb, could you please read that in?
83 is AdHoc Sign Code Revision Task Force Extension Request. If we could have a clarification, maybe by Mr. Costello on what this means, please?
Okay, let's go to Aaron Costello. What's the intent or what is your request here?
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. It's simply a report, as today is the deadline of the task force.
Okay, so you would ask for a motion to acknowledge?
Yes, preemptively.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Costello.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned, today is April 18th, and my first item of action is to thank all the task force members for their diligence and their time. Over 500 man-hours went into this task force over the last six months. And at this point, I'd like to sound off and recognize those who were able to take the time out of their schedule tonight and attend. On the left, we have Pat Hamilton. We have Mark Kirkaby, Barry Hort. I see Lisa Modric. I see Cody Champion. And in the back, we have Rod Pettigrew. All of them took a lot of time out of their lives and their schedules and their work and their families to attend and put effort towards the revision of the sign code as they were tasked with by this council. First, I have a question. Is Mr. Nick Kenniston still in the audience?
I do not believe so.
He's left. Okay. I had a question for Nick, and that question is going to be how many meetings he attended. And I may not have clear recollection, but I'm pretty sure it's zero. And we have Mr. Quasny, who did attend a few towards the end. We appreciate that. Public participation is always welcome. However, I'm befuddled that through that limited experience, or no experience, depending on the subject, they had the ability to evaluate the conduct and effectiveness of the task force members and that that experience led them to conclude that the task force should be disbanded and start over. May we all have such clairvoyance. I also want to clear up a phrase that was used earlier, and that was the phrase that Scenic Rapid City worked in concert with the task force. To me, "in concert" may allude to collusion. I personally, through my experience, saw no collusion between Scenic Rapid City and the task force members. From my perception, it was an independent action. The potential conflict of interest that was alluded to does warrant contemplation. And after contemplating it myself and seeking counsel, I concluded that a task force member participating in another group associated with signage is no different than the potential conflict of interest this council created when it appointed those who work in the sign industry to assist in drafting laws that regulate them. And as Chair of the AdHoc Sign Code Revision Task Force, I can attest to the fact that the interests of those in the task force has led to conflict and debate. It led to impassioned and thoughtful speech. And after six months of this and over 500 hours spent by the task force members, we have come to some conclusions. Task force has reviewed the code, and we have made and voted on recommended changes. Currently, Assistant City Attorney Joel Landine is in the process of drafting the recommended changes in an ordinance form. And when that is complete, the task force will reconvene and review the language that Mr. Landine has drafted. And when the committee feels that the language represents the recommendations of the committee, we will officially bring it forward. I place a tentative timeline on this action to be approximately four weeks. And at that point, I will stand for questions.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wiefenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Costello, for your diligence and sticking with the task force and through thick and thin and bringing some recommendations forward. As I was alluding to earlier, and I took it off the table, that there's been issues with people within the city who own businesses and trying to get around the construction and stuff, have concerns with how they will signage their buildings with banners and those types of things. But I think four weeks is probably within the timeframe that'll allow them to come up with some conclusions. So I'm hoping that between the task force and the city employees that they will come up with some recommendations for that also. And I don't see any reason to disband your task force, even though at the very beginning I was, I was, I thought then, and I still think today, that there was room for some opportunity to empower our employees and empower us as elected officials to make some good conclusions and by working with the people that are on the ground every day, working those ordinances. Understand, as your recommendations come forward, we'll look forward to seeing them and take them as recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, sing, probably sing, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Does take us to the public hearing items. These are items 84 through 98, 84 through 98 inclusive. Chair of the pro motion to open the public hearing. Comments on 84 through 98? We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do have three different speaker request forms. The first on, these are all on item number 91, everyone, item number 91. First one is Rick Askvig. I believe I pronounced that right. Rick, did I get that right? Okay, Rick, there again, if you could come forward, identify yourself for the record. And there will be 3 minutes, just watch lights, and the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, and Councilwoman, thank you for your time. And I would just like to say, I had a meeting with the manager of Walgreens today. We tried to come to a working conclusion of how to resolve this issue. I'm sure you're all aware of the last go-around. I don't need to remind you of it. I've just got a couple of things to say, and I won't take up a bunch of time. I hope we can come to a working conclusion on this item for the benefit of the store and the people of the neighborhood. We have a problem. We don't, we don't want to have any problems with alcohol over there. And from what the neighbors have expressed, they're really adamant about not having sales of it there. I understand Walgreens' position very clearly and their rights. It's, and to my understanding, there was a lawsuit pending. It's on hold due to approval of a permit or a license for alcohol. And our stand is it is a shame that the city can be held ransom by a corporation to be approved a license to sell alcohol. When, when there's bigger and better lawsuits out there that they know they're gonna lose, but they will fight against them. You know, I'm just, I'm pleading to Walgreens and the council to do the right thing for the citizens of North Rapid in that area. And with that, for those of you who voted favorably the first go-around, I thank you very much. And for those of you who did not, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Alice McCoy, item number 91. Good evening, Alice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Please identify yourself, and then the floor is yours.
My name is Alice McCoy, and I am talking as one of the citizens that live in this area. And the number of the people, the neighborhood, not the businesses, but the neighborhood that live around it, has asked me to come. And please look at what it does to a neighborhood. I've pretty much done my speech when I was doing up here for the casino, and you know what happened there. And I'm, I understand if this goes the same way. But I think we need to do something, I don't know if we need to change state law or what it is, that looks at what the neighborhood that has to live with what these businesses do. And I under, you know, having been in the legislature, I understand all that stuff too. But I said I would be up here and be a voice for the people of the community that have to live with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alice. We also have a speaker request form from Sarah Baron-Hui. Item number 91, everyone. There again, Sarah, if you would identify yourself for the record, then the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Baron-Hui. Excuse me, I'm from Bangs McCullin Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of Walgreens tonight. I do have some photos I'd like to pass around, so I'm actually gonna ask our store manager...
Joel, can you grab this, please?
Or Joel.
Yep.
These photos are from the Mountain View store, and they depict the beer and wine display in the Mountain View store here in Rapid City. Before I get into substance, I do want to make a brief record on the issue of notice. I want the council to know that neither I nor anyone from Walgreens received notice of the fact that this matter was on the council's agenda on April 4th or tonight. In fact, our Young Journalist of the Year informed me on Friday night via email that this matter was up on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I've since learned that it's a policy or practice of the Finance Office to not provide personal notice of application hearings to applicants. And I hope that the city revisits that issue. I think there are serious due process considerations there that might want to be looked at. Our proposal tonight is the same as what we were here on before back in August. Walgreens would like to offer a very limited selection of beer and wine to its customers. If you've been to the Mountain View Road or the Mount Rushmore Road store, you will see that it is indeed a very limited selection. And I have store managers here from both of those stores who will, if you are so inclined to ask, describe to you the very positive response that this has, that he has received from customers at both of those locations. response that this has, that he has received from customers at both of those locations. Right now, as this matter sits before the council, the record before you tonight, as well as the record that was presented to you back in August overwhelmingly reveals that this application and this request should be granted. There is absolutely no evidence to suggest that any of the concerns expressed by the neighborhood will come to fruition, and under state law, there has to be actual tangible or empirical evidence to show that these fears will become a reality. We absolutely respect their concerns as neighbors that live near this property, and we appreciate those concerns, but the fact of the matter is that that type of speculation and conjecture is not a valid legal basis to deny this type of request. State law requires more. I also want to object to the characterization of why we are here tonight as being a corporation holding this council ransom. I think you all know that is not the case, but I do want to be on record as saying that is blatantly false, and I believe that that comment was out of line and not based on fact whatsoever. I don't know of anyone who does not want North Rapid to prosper and grow, thank you, but denying this request is not the means to achieve that goal, nor is it an appropriate remedy to the problems that North Rapid faces. If I can have ten more seconds.
Go ahead.
I want to point out to the council members that by voting in favor of this request, you are not saying to the neighborhood of North Rapid that we don't care what you think, and it's not the equivalent of saying that what you think or believe or feel doesn't matter, but if you vote in favor of this request, you're simply applying and respecting the law that governs the decision you have to make tonight.
Thank you.
We would ask that you approve the request for all those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we do leave the public hearing open, and so we are on to the continued public hearing consent items, items eighty-four through eighty-eight, eighty-four through eighty-eight. Do we need to poll any of those, Patsy? How about from the council? If not, Chair would look for motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items eighty-four through eighty-eight, inclusive per the recommendations on the printed agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Takes us to the end of the continued public hearing consent items. We're on, Chair would look for motion to close the public hearing on the items eighty-four through ninety-eight inclusive, please.
No motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items, items eighty-nine through ninety-four inclusive. Does anyone wish to have any item eighty-nine through ninety-four inclusive pulled from the consent calendar? If so, thank you. Bonnie? Very good, item number ninety-one. Any items to be polled dealing with items eighty-nine through ninety-four inclusive? If not, Chair would look for motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items eighty-nine through ninety-four inclusive, with the exception of item number ninety-one.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Deb, where'd Deb go? Let's see, Ron, can you read in? Mr. Wyffenbach, can you read in item number ninety-one, please?
Item number ninety-one. Walgreens Company DBA Walgreens, number zero-nine-five-one-two-one-one-two-five, North Lacrosse Street for a package off-sale liquor. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, we have a motion, please.
For approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've looked at this issue before, and I was on the opposite end of this issue last time it came up, and I would like to ask our city attorney a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Jason, what are we deciding on this issue tonight? What is our responsibility as a council to decide on this particular issue?
Mr. Green.
The issue tonight is the issuance of an off-sale liquor license. Under state law, there are two criteria that you consider. One is the fitness of the applicant to hold the license, and the other is the suitability of the location. Those are the two statutory criteria.
So what, Mr. Mayor, if I may, what criteria do we use to find out if the location is suitable?
Mr. Green.
There's not a heck of a lot of guidance in state law on that particular issue. I think you would need to point to specific evidence that would show it would not be suitable in order to have that decision sustained.
So, I mean, that kind of in there for, takes a little bit of Mr. Rick, Rick's comments about having to make it, they make it, we make a decision, and then they have to defend it. I mean, not that maybe it was a little bit out of context that Walgreens was trying to suffocate this community over there, but in essence, because of the way the state law is and the way our zoning is, basically, we have to make a decision of, sort of, an arbitrary decision based upon suitable. How do you define suitable? How does the council define the word suitable location?
Mr. Green.
Well, there's not a specific definition of that, but the fact that the property is zoned general commercial, I think, is one factor that weighs heavily on the side of a finding of suitability. I think you'd need very specific evidence for, that would show it was not suitable if that was the route the council intended to go. You know, something like, it's, you know, it's the only general commercial surrounded entirely by residential, and it's right next to a daycare and a school, and there's evidence of problems at the location already, none of which is in evidence or is before the council tonight. So I think there's a difficult time showing that it's not a suitable location at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Wyffenbach, Charles.
Thank you, understanding that we can straddle one piece of property to the next into maybe three or four of these residential backyards from the Walgreens parking lot. So there's not any type of buffer whatsoever, not a street, not any kind of barricade or obstacle to keep people from just, you know, basically walking from one location to the next with one step or two steps. If there was a way, and I think Alice had alluded to this earlier about, you know, we've talked a lot about process and procedure tonight, to be able to look forward into the future, to be able to, I know we can't do anything about it tonight, but I'm hoping that sometime in the future, we can come back and look at some of these zoning requirements, because basically, when this Walgreens went in there, the neighborhood put up a fight at that time to even allow it to happen, and whether or not they were on the record promises or not that they would or wouldn't sell alcohol is beside the point tonight, understand that. But anytime that, and we've had conversations about shoehorning other businesses into areas of Rapid City here, and they didn't get very far, not very far at all, with any regards to any legalities or whatever the case may be, and I think that sometimes because of the nature of the location that people are treated a little bit differently, but understanding that Walgreens is already there, it's zoned general commercial, whether it's suitable or not, I guess is still questionable to me. I don't believe it's a suitable location in regards to the fact that you can just step across from one lot line to the next. When the casino went into North Rapid on Fifth Street, one of the things I asked is why? Why would we vote it down? Why, how can we vote it down? They met all the criteria. In this case, I'm not sure that Walgreens meets the criteria of a suitable location. I think it's arguable, so with that being said, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I would like to say this situation kind of makes my blood boil. We voted and we stood with council with the people of North Rapid and said that Walgreens was not, there was too much into the neighborhood, that it was not a suitable location. I kind of resent Walgreens' council coming now tonight and saying that this is not, you know, that they respect the people of North Rapid. If that was true, then they would not have turned around and sued the city to demand their location there. I, and to say, this is not about government against the people, that's exactly what this is. The people of North Rapid in that neighborhood, they got lots of signatures to say we did not want that them to sell liquor there. They were told that initially when Walgreens went into there, that there would not be selling liquor there, and we have, here in the council, we have no problem whatsoever for Walgreens to sell wherever they want, as long as they're wanted, and Walgreens is not wanted there, but yet they are inserting themselves, not that Walgreens is not wanted, the store is wanted there, but not the liquor. And so anyway, it just makes, like I said, my blood boil because we're screwing the people, but we're trying to act nice, like, oh, we're going to be such, you know, we can really do great packaging with our liquor in that store, when really, it's business, corporations going against the people's will, and there's nothing more to be said about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been actually a tough issue and one that I remember distinctly, and I want to explain, provide a little bit of background before I get into asking some questions. I remember this issue when it came up, and actually specifically changed my vote on this issue, and it was because of the logical basis of the explanation the people had provided. Both sides had readily admitted that the location where Walgreens is currently built was over a church, and further, Walgreens clearly stated that their national policy used to be that they didn't sell liquor or beer, or wine for that matter. What was also interesting is that both sides equally admitted that they met in a church. Now, it does seem reasonable to me, based on all three of those things that both sides agreed to when this issue first came up, that it would be very, very likely that if I were representative of Walgreens and I were in their shoes, I would be more than ready to tell the residents of North Rapid that they wouldn't sell those items, and it seems reasonable to me that that would have been the case. However, however, Alderman Wyffenbach does raise an interesting point in referencing a casino issue that we recently went through, and the court determined very clearly that the city council in these matters is legally bound according to an evidentiary basis, meaning that we have to have evidence to make our decision. Specifically, the court in that case referenced South Dakota Code five-eleven-four, Tac four, and talking about, and specifically emphasized, the approving authority shall consider the stated criteria, the objectives of the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of the zoning ordinance and its relative zoning districts when making a decision to approve or disapprove a conditional Later on in that same decision, talked about permitting and how we have to make these decisions. With that background, I guess I would ask if there is any evidence whatsoever that any of the neighbors can provide us with helping in this decision to show that Walgreens did make these statements, and I would open that up publicly, because I would love to legally be able to stand on my own two feet here and defend the citizens of North Rapid, but I am bound by the law.
Thank you. Did you want to ask the question of someone in the audience, or you just put that out there?
Putting it out.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification here, Alderman Mason referenced the previous court case and cited a provision of SDCL Chapter eleven-four, which is the zoning section. This issue actually arises under SDCL Title thirty-five, which deals with alcohol licensing. I believe that the analysis is probably similar, but I think it's important to keep in mind, this is not a zoning question tonight, it's a license issuance question tonight.
Very good, thank you for that clarification. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on, I do have a question for the city attorney.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, in reference to the MG Oil case in Haynes Avenue, and where we are at on that case, which we are appealing, I would assume, or I know we are, we're appealing that decision, correct?
Let's go to Jason Green.
The appeal on the Haynes Avenue case, the MG Oil, that one is completed. The South Dakota Supreme Court has ruled on that one, where we have placed the litigation on the Walgreens issue based on the council's previous denial of the amendment on hold because we identified that this option existed for them and would not require any changes to their, I believe it's planned development. So the litigation that was commenced by Walmart is essentially on hold pending the outcome of this particular action tonight.
Walgreens, not Walmart.
I apologize, Walgreens, yes.
Very good.
My last question would be, is we've already approved issuance to Walgreens for Mount Rushmore Road, and since really, the only difference between the two is that there's a street buffer between the residential and Walgreens. I think that's, really, there is housing right across the street from Walgreens on Mount Rushmore Road. Does that create another issue for us on this item here?
Mr. Green.
I'm not sure that it does, and I'm not entirely certain that at the Walgreens on Mount Rushmore Road, there's not housing adjacent to the south, but I would expect that the Walgreens representatives could confirm that.
It's actually to the north, and it's just right across the street. I just looked it up in a Rapid map, so I mean, there is housing right across the street of Fifth Street, so basically, it'd be pretty tough to argue that a street would make the difference between the two neighborhoods, is that correct?
Mr. Green.
A street buffer, I should say.
Well, it's certainly a distinction. I don't know how much weight it's going to hold if the decision is challenged in a vacuum. It's, there's not a lot of good law on this, as I've said, in South Dakota, so I'd be hesitant to say that, yes, it's good enough, or no, it's not. I can tell you that from a position of defending the decision, I'd want more.
Thank you.
Further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis.
Aye.
Hettcock. Aye. Kroger.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Quaker. Wa.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion passes on a six to four, is that correct, Chilling? Very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items. These are items ninety-five through ninety-eight. Item number ninety-five, Alderwoman Hettcock, if you please read that in.
Ninety-five is authorize the mayor and finance office to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water sewer along Green Drive, or Green Tree Drive located at fifty-eight-eleven Green Tree Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval, this is item number ninety-five. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-six, please.
Ninety-six is a request by Frederick and Arlene White for a variance subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to provide pavement, curb gutter sidewalk, streetlight, conduit, water, and sewer, and reduce the right-of-way width from one-hundred-and-ten feet to one-hundred feet as per Chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at fifty-eight-eleven Green Tree Drive, and I approve with stips, and approval in part, maybe...
Patsy, what's the recommendation?
That's a deny in part and approve in part.
Per the Plan Commission's recommendation?
Right. That'd be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve in part and deny in part per the Plan Commission's recommendation. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ninety-seven, please.
Ninety-seven is authorize the mayor and finance to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment of the installation of curb gutter sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, and sewer along East Philadelphia Street, let's see, located at south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of intersection East Anamosa Street and North Creek Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval, item number ninety-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-eight, please.
Ninety-eight is requested by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for variance to the subdivision regulations to allow plating half of right-of-way and waive the requirement to install pavement, curb gutter sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, and sewer as per Chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code located on the south side of East Anamosa Street, southeast of intersection East Anamosa Street and North Creek Drive, and I approve with stips, please.
We have a motion, second for approval. Was that with stips, Patsy?
Yes, one step.
Very good, thank you. I didn't have that in my notes. Motion on the floor is for approval of item number ninety-eight, approval with stipulations. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Pauline, bill list, please.
The bill list before you is for six million nine hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eleven cents.
No additions?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Boy, must be getting light. We have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list as... We have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list as published for a grand total of $6,930,126.11. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, for the purposes permitted by SDCL 1-25-2.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by SDCL 1-25-2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're out of executive session. Mr. Green.
The discussion in executive session on the personnel matter.
We have a motion, second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, let's take a real quick roll call, please.
Wyffenbach. Davis. Haddcock.
She's not in the room.
Kroger.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason.
Okay, motion passes on a seven to two vote. Okay?
I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Just go ahead.
When I showed up here tonight, I had an orange sitting right here.
Oh.
And it's disappeared. So, yeah, all right, Mr. Mayor. Did you eat it?
No, actually, I thought it was left over from the school board meeting.
Okay. Now that that's cleared up, I yield the floor.
Okay. Motion, second, adjourned, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.